And then I'll have to go off because it's starting with the wrong one, right?
Good evening. Welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks. This is the time and place for the Jobs Development Authority meeting. We'll begin with roll call, please.
Weigel.
Here.
Doppler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Kababi.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Bean.
Here.
Mayor Pocinski.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Very good. Thanks. All present. And Ms. Richards, we have some business to start with.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Weber. When we published the public hearing notice for the two items, first two items on your agenda, there was a typo that got the public hearing date wrong. So we're asking that you find exigent circumstances and waive the public notice requirement. We'll still hold the public hearing, but we're just asking for you to vote to waive the public notification of that public hearing requirement. That does require a two-thirds vote.
Very good. And Mr. Gausdud, we're good with that?
All right, yep.
Very good. Thank you. So looking for all in favor of moving forward in that manner?
You need a motion?
Do we need a motion to begin?
So move.
Yeah, okay. We've got a motion from Mr. Sandy, a second from Mr. Kabami. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. We have our two-thirds majority. Very good. And will we begin with Mr. Baumach?
Chairman Weber, members of the JDA, thanks for the opportunity. I get to present on JR Investments, which is a real estate holding company for countrywide sanitation. They provide roll-off and sanitary refuse service for businesses and individuals in the Grand Forks region and within 120 miles of Grand Forks. This source of roll-off and refuse feeds a recycling division of the company, which adds value to discarded materials because of cleaning, sorting, bailing, of which are then sold to outside markets, primarily the Minneapolis-St. Paul markets. Tonight, we do have the owner, Rachel Granovich, with us. She tried to zoom into the Growth Fund Committee last meeting, but didn't get the opportunity. So I wanted to give her the chance to talk about some of the exciting things they're working on right now.
Wonderful. Thank you. And welcome. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thanks for having me. Again, my name is Rachel Granovich. I'm sure most of you know who I am. So our plan is to build an administrative office along with more shop warehouse for our trucks. We've pretty much, we've been on the property for well over five years and been, we've been working in these makeshift offices for a very, very long time. So we've outgrown it and we've finally now felt that it's time to build these offices, to expand our software, our people, our programs, everything. So, yeah.
Just good news. This is a project represents continued investment from a growing local company that drives new wealth into Grand Forks year after year. Thanks for all you do and thanks for you and your team's investments in our community.
Thank you so much.
Yes. Any questions or you have more to give us the details of the deal, please, Brandon. Thank you.
That's right. I'll just highlight the details. A total project investment of $900,000. They're pursuing a flex pay loan, which would buy the interest rate down on that private note to 1%. So this would be a loan of the JDA of just over $95,000, which would leverage $177,000 from the bank in North Dakota. So with your approval, that would be sought or taken care of. And Perry Hillman Bank, First State Bank, has been available throughout this conversation, too.
Very good. Thank you. Question or a motion?
I'll move approval.
Motion for Mr. Weigel, a second for Mayor Pocinski. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you, Rachel. And the next item on our agenda?
2.2 is mobile recon update and release of funds.
Very good.
Thank you. Mobile Recon Systems, we just heard last week and the week prior with the ribbon cutting, they're celebrating their first year in the Grand Forks market after having moved in from out of state. Made a lot of progress and they're here to provide you a little bit of an update as well as a request. I would just remind you for a little context before I invite Tom Nichol, who's CEO of the company, up to provide that update. In November 2019, the JDA approved an EDAR left loan of $400,000 to Mobile Recon Systems, side by side with the North Dakota Development Fund and Choice Financial. By taking the lead of the North Dakota Development Fund, the JDA released half the dollars in the first day, so a year ago, and required another request for the second half of the loan. There were two written triggers into that request, one meeting sales projection or two making progress towards that goal. Both the North Dakota Development Fund and the JDA agreed to that format. We're here, the North Dakota Development Fund recently reached an agreement to approve the second tranche of funding and they hope to be lockstep with the Jobs Development Authority. So today, we're here supporting that. And as a reminder, the second tranche is made with the very same terms as the first tranche. That includes a loan rate of 3.75% over a seven-year term and it's secured by existing equipment, just like the first, and the second tranche is fully backed by personal guarantees from the principals of the company, Mike and Sandy Dowell. So same terms there. Tom Nichol, CEO of Mobile Recon Systems, is here to provide a more complete update of progress and I'm sure he's happy to stand for any questions as well as I am at the completion of that.
Very good. Thank you, Brandon. Welcome again, Tom. Mr. Nichol, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As Brandon said, it's been almost a year since I was here requesting funding from the JDA and what a year it's been. Some of you, including Mayor Pocinski and Mr. Sandy, were at our recent open house in light of time. I'll hold up, we brought some pictures in case anybody would like to see those. But it was really an exciting event for us. It was also the quarterly Drone Biz meeting, the monthly meeting of the regional AUVSI, the Unmanned Vehicle Association. And what I'd like to, in just a couple of minutes here, is hit on the highlights of what we've accomplished and what we see coming up in the next year and beyond. The terms of the loan agreement included the requirement that we locate in Grand Forks County, that we create jobs. There was a target of 13 jobs in two years and increase economic activity in the area. And we've made great progress in meeting each of those requirements. First, on the operations, we've fully embraced Grand Forks. Within one month of receiving the first $200,000, we've moved our headquarters from Lexington, Kentucky to Grand Forks. By April, well, on April 1st, we started a lease with the Brown Corporation in their property. That's where our shop is located now. My wife and I moved to Grand Forks in June and Brandon mentioned the founders, Mike and Sandy Dowell. They have plans now to be here by February, probably getting the shop that's in Kentucky up here by November. They would have been up here sooner, except for the pandemic has made travel very difficult. As far as hiring, we're ahead of plan, actually, on hitting those targets. We have made seven hires in addition to the three of the principals, three just graduated engineers from UND, two hires who were both looking for opportunities to be back in Grand Forks, one from the Twin Cities, one from Kansas. And we've hired two part-term, part-time interns who are current UND students and hope to employ them as they are available through graduation and beyond. When the Dowells arrive, we'll have eight full-time employees, likely be adding three by the end of the first quarter. As in addition to the hiring, this involvement in the local community, we're on a path to localize sourcing for our UAV components. That has, particularly in light of recent events, has become even more important than than prior. We purchased products and services since we've been here from a number of local companies, including Paragon Pro, Ideal Aerosmith, Anchor Marketing. Plus, we're actively engaged with others in the ecosystem, the UAS test site, Air autonomy, we've adopted flight control systems that they have and working very closely with them, and skyscopes as well, providing some services for them. Air autonomy's also introduced us to Microsoft. We're working through them on a relationship with Microsoft for our system to be one of the first two included in their drone flight simulation system. We have several proposals in the works for research grants with the university and a senior design project is underway in mechanical engineering. I mention that because as a result of that, that actually fits this local sourcing. If we can begin making our own propellers, for instance, we then bring those onshore, that could be something that we could do locally as a result of designs created locally. So that just points out, we see tremendous opportunity within the ecosystem here for further expansion along those lines. I acknowledge we've not made the progress we had hoped to with sales, but the pandemic has definitely presented almost impossible hurdles to overcome. Right out the door, as we were, well, we received the funding in mid-December, you know, by mid-March, things were beginning to shut down. That disrupted supply chains, caused customers to not be even thinking about selling for several, or purchasing, rather, for several months. Our marketing plans were actually heavily oriented toward trade shows this year, and those have all either been canceled or moved to next year. And then our move to Grand Forks was delayed several months because of that. But despite that, I feel confident about the months ahead. We adjusted to really focus on refining our platforms to integrate functionality of several strategic partners. That's become, we'd had that in mind long-term, but that's, we moved that up to more of a short-term focus in working with those partners, deepening those relationships on the marketing front. I mentioned Air autonomy and skyscopes. Those are two of them. There are four companies, actually, all four were represented at the open house, showing their support as well as desire to be involved with us. One, a Missouri company, Aerial Spreader, with seed spreading, which we've gotten plugged in with North Dakota State as well. That's just one example of several of them. I can describe more if you have more interest in that. Three of those four companies, actually, with our growth together, have plans to set up a presence in Grand Forks as well. So as far as use of funds, the additional money from Grand Forks will allow us to execute the plans necessary to continue the track we're on for success. We envision by nine months from now, $750,000 of sales, so getting back on track with the sales beginning and really leveraging these strategic partnerships, supporting those. So funding from Grand Forks has been instrumental in establishing our business here and for that, we're very grateful. We've moved the headquarters here, achieved over half of our target employment goals and become an integral part of the North Dakota UAS ecosystem as a US-based designer and manufacturer of unmanned vehicles, previously missing piece of the ecosystem. The partnerships we've already achieved demonstrate the tremendous progress that we've made and laying the groundwork for the months and years ahead. And all this in spite of the pandemic throwing some curveballs for us. We're tremendously excited and optimistic about the future here and look forward to bringing more manufacturing to the region. And with that, I respectfully request that you approve the balance of the funding.
Very good.
Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Any questions from JDA members? Yes, Mr. Kabami, please.
Mr. Nichol, do you mind briefly just letting us know how you were introduced to our community?
Sure. It was actually the representative of the Economic Development Corporation. We had put out a press release, let's see, almost two years ago. And he reached out to us and introduced us to North Dakota. We honestly had not been thinking of it at all then. And I'll admit, our first reaction was whether we would even respond or not. But we just were ignorant about what was here.
Awesome. Thank you. I just want to commend you and the EDC for the job done. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Mr. Kabami. Yes. Anything further? Congratulations on building the new partnerships already, being nimble during difficult times. And welcome to you and your wife.
Thank you.
For moving here, for having faith in this as a community to invest in and for contributing to this growing UAS infrastructure we have.
Look forward to more.
Motion for Mr. Sandy? A second from Ms. Doppler. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Very good motion. Passes. Thank you again.
Thank you all.
Moving on, we have an update on item 3.1, COVID response unmet needs, the CRun Loan Program, from Mr. Colin Hanson. Colin.
Okay, Chair Weber, members of the JDA, really quickly, the CRun RLF, we've been referring it to as the CRun, but it's a COVID-19 response unmet needs revolving loan fund, was launched on September 15th. It was capitalized with EDA CARES Act dollars that we were granted. We have 1.29 million to loan out from this new RLF fund. The deadline for the applications are in 10 days. That's October 15th. We've been working with the North Dakota Small Business Development Centers to provide support to individuals and businesses that are looking to apply for this program, providing them support and preparing their financial documents, filling out the application, whatever they need to get it across the finish line. We've launched a website since we've started with the online application, a self-check form for individuals and lenders to help determine their eligibility for the fund, video walkthrough of the application, various resources and templates, and a regular weekly office hours for those who have questions. We've had about 20 business owners and lenders who've come forward interested in the program, representing about 24, 25 individual business entities. So with that, I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Hanson on the CRun Loan Program? This is information only this evening? Very good. Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
And item 3.2, Mr. Phelan, Tech Accelerator and Herald Building. Update.
JDA President Weber and members of the Jobs Development Authority. I briefed this last week at the Growth Fund Committee. I have a few updates. I just want to highlight some of the private sector partners. I did note and I'm glad I have Amy Whitney also here with the Center of Innovation. So I'll give an overview and have Amy come up and say a few more words. So Mayor Pocinski did follow up, as you called the build-to-scale that was submitted by the Center of Innovation. The Jobs Development Authority was a centerpiece to that. That was a $1.2 million grant request, $600,000 from the EDA or the Economic Development Administration. We did get word, we did not receive that grant, and I'll have Amy talk a little bit more about that. Importantly, there was a 50-50 match and so there was additional $600,000. $300,000 was, is proposed to come from the Jobs Development Authority, $200,000 from the private sector. And Mayor Pocinski has followed up with all those entities and they have committed as part of more of a locally driven, maybe more of an incremental strategy. I don't want to just name off those entities that have recommitted themselves. That's MidCo, Choice Financial, Edgewood, Ideal Aerosmith, True North Equipment, E2S, and the EDC. And that's that $200,000. Also, UND has committed for the remaining $100,000. That gets us to the $600,000. So we also, Meredith and I are working with Amy Whitney in the Center of Innovation and we have that EDA capital grant that we're working on, that plus or minus around $3 million that you've given us authorization. We're going to do everything we can to submit that this week. And so we got to put some work together. So there's a framework there. We got to do some work, but we are intending to submit that. And then that would be part of the regular 50-50 appropriation from the EDA that begins here in October. So we want to get this in ASAP in fine form here in October. So we are working on that this week. So we're still moving ahead. It's always going to be different, but as Mayor Pocinski and others have here have, UAS is an important sector. The tech sector is very important and we just need to probably get there a little bit different way. So with that, I would defer to Amy because she's, has been on the build-to-scale to follow up on that portion.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Ms. Whitney, welcome.
Thank you, Chairman. Members of the JDA, Mr. Phelan. I think to add to that, you know, unfortunately, we did not receive the build-to-scale grant, which was a disappointment for us. And what it really is requiring us to do is kind of rethink our strategy and do a couple of things, one of them being, you know, we're going to fast-track the sustainability plan that we had built into that grant and looking at how can we find more private sector partners to come to the table earlier in the timeline that we had set forward. So the grant would have given us a three-year window to utilize those funds and to think of us a little bit more of a ramp. So at this point, we're going to fast-track some of the sustainability plans that we had looked to in that build-to-scale grant as a way to support this project. You know, as Mr. Phelan noted, you know, with and assisting them and assisting the city in writing the construction grant, we have done everything we can at this point. Mine is some final edits that we're working on this week and that should hopefully be able to be put forward to the EDA without too much more to do with that particular grant application. We are confident and hopeful that we should receive those construction grants, that construction grant. Again, never know until the i's are dotted, t's are crossed, and signatures are actually on the final document. Without getting build-to-scale, what that has meant for us is, you know, we spent some time revising and revisiting the operational plan. And so, you know, things like, how do we do things like use more local expertise on a short term, in the, in the shorter term, and then build to some of those national types of expertise that we were going to try and draw from a little more quickly by having some additional grant funds to help us with that? So we'll just kind of shift some of the ways that we were going to go about implementation. You know, for UND, for instance, on our end, we're looking to reallocate some of our staffing resources to put forward with this plan rather than adding an additional hire to that staffing plan. So looking at all those different options, I believe, after talking to Mayor Pocinski and Mr. Phelan, we have a really strong plan to get this off the ground and really move this collaboration forward. So we're excited. We just have to do it a little bit differently. And as we've learned in the midst of a COVID pandemic, be flexible and adaptable. And we're doing that because we know this is a great opportunity for the city of Grand Forks and the region. And I'd be welcome to take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Whitney. Thank you, Ms. Whitney. Any questions for Ms. Whitney? I'd also ask Mayor Bochensky, Council President Sandy, if you have anything to add, your leadership on this project. Maybe it's all been said. Mayor Bochensky?
Well, thank you, Councilmember Weber, JDA Chair. I would just say thank you. We've got, you know, worked very closely on this project, and we'll continue to, and it's been a pleasure. So thank you for your work.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure. I look forward to the future.
I'd second that. Great opportunity, so I'm looking forward to seeing how things come to fruition in the future. Thank you, Ms. Whitney.
Thank you.
Very good. And this also is information only, so if there's no further questions, we're looking for a motion to adjourn for Mr. Weigle, second for Mayor Bochensky. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thanks.
Call to order, Grand Forks City Council meeting, Monday, October 5th, 5:30 PM. Roll call, Marine.
Weigle.
Here.
Dockler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Cavami.
Here.
Veen.
Here.
And Sandy.
Here.
All present. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Pledge allegiance. 1.3, we have a few mayor's announcements. I got to attend President Armikas' inauguration today. So he was inaugurated as the 13th President of the university. Very beautiful ceremony, just missing the people in attendance, but it was a good live event. And also, it's UND's Homecoming Week, which has looked a little different this year than normal. We've got the Public Works crews is gearing up for leaf pickup. We're going to wait for a few more of those leaves to fall before we get that going, probably another week or two. Stay tuned. We'll make that announcement so people can get their leaves out on the curb. We're up 100 days. It's the first time in 20 years we've had first 100 days, so we're going to have a little presentation about that. It's been very fast-paced and action-oriented, but I'm proud of what administration and staff has been able to accomplish. Most importantly, over the past two weeks, our firefighters went out and they returned safe from Oregon. We're going to have a presentation here in a minute from Chief Lorenz. I think that does it for the mayor's announcements. Do you have... Yep. Go on to two awards presentations, appointments, and proclamations.
2.1 is proclamation, Fire Prevention Week, October 4th through the 10th, 2020.
It seems to be a theme today as firefighters are here. We got Mr. Dewey was nice enough to bring me a shirt for their cancer awareness, so I haven't got to wear it yet, but I figured the least I could do is put it out. So thank you, sir. So we have a proclamation for Fire Prevention Week, October 4th to the 10th, 2020, as follows. Whereas the City of Grand Forks, North Dakota is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Grand Forks, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire, and whereas cooking is the leading cause of home fires in the United States, and two of every five home fires start in the kitchen, with 31% of these fires resulting from unattended cooking, and whereas Grand Forks first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas the 2020 Fire Prevention Week theme, Serve Up Fire Safety in the Kitchen, serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Now, therefore, I, Brandon Bochensky, Mayor of Grand Forks, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim up October 4th to the 10th, 2020, as Fire Prevention Week, and I urge all the people of Grand Forks to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Grand Forks Police Department. Fire Department. Oh, jeez, I messed that up right at the end. Too much fire. Thank you, Mr. Weigle. The Grand Forks Fire Department, jeez.
In case somebody ever asks if I pay attention or not, you can say I did at least one time.
Perfect. From there, we can go on to, fittingly, to 2.2.
Fire Department Task Force Deployment Review, West Coast Wildfires.
Chief Lorenz and others.
Good evening, Mayor Bochensky and members of the council. With the Fire Department, as we often have to do and adapt to the changing environment, there's supposed to be four more people with me this evening, and two of them are working this evening, and prior to the meeting, just got called out on a structural fire. So unfortunately, we're down to two, and naturally, the two people that created the presentation were the two that left, so we're going to see how these two do with improvising and adapting. As you're all aware, the City of Grand Forks Fire Department participated as part of a structural wildland firefighting task force from North Dakota that assisted Oregon with the recent wildfires. Our personnel departed at approximately 6:00 AM on Monday, September 14th, and returned at approximately 10:00 PM on Thursday, October 1st. In addition to Grand Forks, initially, the task force consisted of equipment and personnel from Williston and Fargo, and then ultimately, the next day, Minot deployed the same resources that met up with the task force in Oregon. Prior to a department, and while en route, assignments changed frequently. It seemed like every six hours, we were getting a new destination that they were going to deploy to. Ultimately, they ended up helping at the Slater and Devil's Fire, as they named the fires out there in the wildland arena, which is right on the Oregon-California border, just north of there in Oregon. The four individuals from Grand Forks that participated as part of the task force were Captains Jared Kurtz, Fire Apparatus Specialist Nate Norgren, Senior Firefighter Bryce O'Neill, and Senior Firefighter Darren Casti. Captain Kurtz and Darren are the two that are out on the call right now, but fortunately, we have their family with them, with us this evening. Jared's wife, Heather, is with us, and Darren's family, wife Alyssa, children Reagan and Grant, and sister Kiri are with us this evening. So at least we have some representation. This is a learning opportunity for many of us. During my career, I have never been part of organizing or dispatching this type of assignment, especially across the country. And so, we had to respond very rapidly in the planning and preparation. It seemed like we learned about this on a Friday, and Saturday, it sounded like it was going to be a Tuesday, and by Sunday, they were saying, could you be here, leave Monday morning? So we had to identify people and move pretty quickly. I can tell you that I personally am very proud of these four individuals, the department and the city. The informal reports that I've received are that all of our crews out there exceeded expectations. So that was very good news to hear. With that, we have a short presentation with some slides that hopefully these guys will get through very well. I'm not sure which button I need here. Is this one? There we are. Okay. Okay.
Heather, thanks for having us and letting us give this short presentation for you here tonight. Start off here with the, some pictures, and we'll just kind of give a brief explanation of each one that we see here. So this one here, this is the Next Day Task Force One Crew. That is all 16 of us. There was 17, but the chief mostly, he stayed down at the bottom of the hill and kind of ran things. Yeah, he wasn't climbing the hills with us. So there's Grand Forks, Fargo-Minot, and Williston, all of us there at the top of the mountain. Okay, so this one here shows some of our sleeping arrangements for one of the nights. When we got there, we didn't quite have all the logistics set up quite yet, so we were short four tents. So...
In our defense, they told us we were going to be staying at a school.
Yeah. So we showed up with sleeping bags when we needed tents and cots and that sort of thing. So what we have here is a bit of a lean-to that we fashioned out of some of the equipment we carry on the engines. So fortunately, we had plenty of material to make that with. So Kurtz and myself slept under that. Bryce slept in the Suburban, and then Darren, as you can see there, top left, it's kind of dark, he's actually up there in the hose bed. That's where he spent his first night. This is where I'd say like 99% of our meals were taking place on the bumper of the rigs there, bottom right picture. So this one here shows the first assignment that we had. This was a pretty neat historical building, over 120 years old, I think. So there's a before and after picture there. That's when we first came up to it, and you can see there's pine needles all over the roof, and this is actually about halfway through, but there was a bunch of kind of overgrown shrubs and things growing up on the outside of the building that we had to clean away. And then this is when we left it. You can see that they came in and actually wrapped it with tinfoil. It's like a commercial-grade tinfoil to reflect some of the heat, and then we clean off all the embers, clean the gutters. Couple of people made a joke, these buildings were almost like they were designed to burn. They're covered in redwood bark. That's what they used for siding, and then cedar-shaped shingles as well. So, but they've been there for over 100 years, so whatever they did seemed to work out just fine for them. So this here, these two buildings, we spent probably, what, at least a couple days up there.
Two to four days, yep.
So this is the chateau and the chalet, really neat area. The Oregon caves is the actual national monument that these buildings are on. These were built in the early 1900s as well, at the very top of the mountain. Again, it's pretty similar to that first building we showed you, but they're like 10 times the size of it, and we didn't end up covering these with tinfoil. But what we did with these ones is just cleaned off around them. We didn't get up on the roofs, obviously. That would have been a bit too dangerous, but we set up sprinklers around these ones as well. So if it did come down to it, we had a water supply here. You can see the pond, and then some portable pumps that would have sucked water out of there and sprayed the buildings with sprinklers if it would have gotten to that point. As far as I know, when we left, it had not gotten to the point where we needed to turn them on, but they were ready if it did get there. There's just a couple shots of the crews working there, shoveling away a bunch of buildup debris and pine needles and brush. It was pretty much just a few days of landscaping at those buildings. There's some shots of the wildland fires. You can see the smoke coming off the trees there, and then on the right hand, one, there's some flames there as well. Most of the fires you're seeing there is actually intentionally set fire. It's called a backburn. That's what they burn leading up to the fire to try to stop it. So that's what we spent most of our time on. These pictures here, the one on the left, it's actually an old tree stump, and it was kind of neat to see. The tree would start on fire, and then the roots would continue to burn underground, and it created a hazard in multiple ways. It was obviously fire underneath the ground that had to get exposed and put out, but it also, as it burned away, you'd end up with three, four-foot gaps underneath the soil that if you're walking, you came across that you could fall in there. So a lot of digging, a lot of uprooting all these tree stumps here. It's what we spent a lot of time doing.
Felt like you were walking on a campfire throughout the whole time.
Yeah. There's just some more shots of working in some of the burned-out areas. That hill, again, that was a backburn, so that was intentionally set. The clearing on the floor there, that was a bulldozer came through and cleared all that out, and then they set the fire at the base of the hill and burned up the hill towards the actual uncontrolled fire. And then that's one of our people climbing up it. I would say it's... It was a pretty steep incline. I don't know, 75 degrees or so. We spent a few days climbing up and down that.
Making sure it was completely out, so...
Then after we were demobilized and released, we were on our way home, and Bryce and I were following in one of our chase vehicles, Suburban, and we came across a car accident, and all the fire engines had already gone past. We were taking up the tails, so we were a little strapped for resources in a Suburban with all of our gear that we had. We did have medical gloves, so that came in handy because there was some injuries on the scene, but other than that, we were pretty limited with the radio, and so we got on the radio and called 911, and we were actually, we had contact with the engines that were ahead of us. So that was really helpful because we were able to call them back so they could come and assist us. But unfortunately, prior to us leaving, everybody, for the most part, had dropped all the water out of their tanks just for weight reduction and fuel economy. But Williston, fortunately, they kept a quarter tank of water on their rigs, so they did have enough water to extinguish that burning vehicle there. And then some of the local units showed up and were able to do the cleanup after that. But it was just kind of a right place at the right time, I guess. Bryce and I showed up, and I think Bryce...
Provide medical care to both the patients or whatever that were there. Pulled one person out of the vehicle and provide medical care until other ALS provider arrived, and yeah, like you said, Williston showed up and put the fire out, and then we were released.
And again, just a big thank you from us. I know personally, myself, I don't know what all went on behind the scenes. We were busy packing our duffel bags for a 20-day camping trip, so I didn't really pay attention much to what was going on otherwise, but I know there was a lot that took place. So I'm very much appreciative of it and for the opportunity to go out there, and I know we have a lot of information that we can bring back to the department and share and just kind of inform others on what we did. So thank you for the opportunity. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. It was very helpful.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. I think Grand Forks got a lot of help during the flood, and it was nice to have that opportunity to give back where there was another community in need. I understand there was upwards of almost 30 volunteers. How'd you pick the four?
Very quickly. On a Saturday, we had a meeting, and it boiled down to, we looked at the staffing and shifts. We were short on a couple shifts. One shift needed two people, and we kind of picked, we needed a captain, and we needed a driver, we needed some firefighters. We didn't want to send the newest people, and so it was a kind of a very quick... I would have, out of the 27 people that volunteered, I would have no problem sending any one of them. In fact, I kind of felt bad because they all wanted to go, but ultimately, we had to pick four, and these were the four that they selected, and they represented the city very well.
Thank you. Any other council members want to say anything, or just...
Any questions?
President Sandy?
Not a question. My goodness, you guys. I think the whole country, the folks in Oregon, and certainly here locally owe you a debt of gratitude for everything you do for our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to say something quick? Otherwise, certainly appreciate it, and feel free to come back anytime.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to 2.3.
Okay, 2.3, Grand Forks Regional Water Treatment Plant Startup Completion Update and Overview.
Mr. Phelan, Mr. Gershewski, take it away.
Sounds good. I'm going to have, Wayne, you're going to have to find your presentation. Hey, it's remarkable what a great presentation of all the things that we're doing in the midst of a pandemic, and I think to start off with this treatment plant, it's fully started up as of last week, so we thought we would come here today and give you some snapshots of where we're at with our water treatment plant. And I just want to, the water treatment plant is kind of a 20-plus years in the making, and it's the final piece of our puzzle here, and if you've been here for the last 20 years, we've put a lot of things in place, starting with the raw water intake, the clear wall and pump stations and transmission lines that were all put in in advance of this water treatment plant from 2000 to 2005. Along the way, we did have an earmark. Senator Dorgan was our senator, and he was in Public Works Appropriations. We had an earmark back in 2007, '8-ish. Something called the Great Recession happened. Earmarks went away, and Senator Dorgan decided to retire, too. So we had to go back to Plan B along the way. In 2008, we did reinvest about $2 million... we did reinvest about two million dollars into the water treatment plant to keep it going for the next ten years, knowing that it was gonna be more of a longer slog with funding. Um, so we did that. So you know, when you look back in two thousand eight, when we reinvested two million dollars, we got to about twelve years with our existing plant, and and that was another really great planning process. What you're gonna see up here, we took advantage from two thousand eight to two thousand thirteen, and we did a lot of pilot testing. Um, we have very challenging surface water to treat, both on the Red Lake and the Red River. And so we did a lot of pilot testing over those few years, and to arrive at what we have here is in a dual train system that Wayne's gonna go over. We owe a large um, thanks for our state legislature. So, starting in two thousand thirteen, we received um, state funding from the state legislature. So from uh, two thousand thirteen to fifteen, we received five million dollars uh, from the state legislature on our fifty-fifty cost share, and that helped pay for um, the design of this particular facility. So I I had the um, honor to work with, uh, at the time, City Councilmember Croon, uh, was our, kind of our infrastructure guy back in the day. And then succeeding, um, the next uh, three sessions from um, fifteen to seventeen, seventeen to nineteen, nineteen to twenty-one, where we received an additional seventy million dollars over that timeframe, I had the honor to work with uh, Councilmember Vian, and we were able to receive that funding. So also, we we do deserve a huge um, thank you to Senator Holmberg and Representative Sanford that are still with us. Um, Representative Sanford was on appropriations in the House side, and and Senator Holmberg was Chair of Appropriations on the Senate side. And without their assistance, uh, we would not have received um, funds for this particular um, venture that we had to move forwards with. So it's really a remarkable story. I think whomever's here, it's a fifty-year facility on a hundred-year site, so whomever gets the opportunity to be here a hundred years from now, they're gonna talk about two things, that we did all these great things in the midst of a pandemic, and we even moved forward with a a water treatment plant at that same time. It's quite remarkable, uh, what we've done. I want to give um, some really, some high praise to Melanie Parvey, who are Water Works Director, who's worked over the last several years on this. Melanie's strength has been to bring the whole team together. And if you're involved in some public works projects before Melanie got here, sometimes engineers or architects dominate, and the people that actually get to take over the facility don't get involved in the planning and the design and the construction, and she made sure everyone took ownership. Um, so when operators end up at the plant, they've been fully engaged throughout the way. That's, that's a, that's a really great thing Melanie brought to the team. Lisa Botman, who's uh, really a great complement to uh, Melanie, also worked on the technical side from the environmental piece, um, the lab piece, and they really formed a really terrific alliance. Fred Getz is right over here. He's our uh, water treatment plant supervisor, and Fred did a really terrific job leading um, the folks that are operators as part of planning all the, all the way through construction and and startup and operation. And uh, over the last several months, they've been operating two plants. They've been operating the one downtown and the one out um, out west of town in the midst of a pandemic. So they, they've worked a lot of hours, and um, you know, when you would ask Fred, what what do you and your folks need? And uh, they never asked for anything. What they said is they want to make sure they, on behalf of the community, get this thing started up well, and the whole community can be proud of what what we've delivered here. So thanks to that. I want to give another, Wayne's gonna give a presentation. Wayne Gershewski, um, I said to him the other day, I think he protects the city of Grand Forks even more than I do as a city administrator. He is all in on the city of Grand Forks. He's been involved in all the design and construction of all those pieces of the puzzle over these last twenty years. And um, really, uh, this is his capstone thing, but um, we're fortunate to have consultants uh, like AE2S, and and really individuals like Wayne Gershewski that do what they do, and are just incredibly, sometimes we give uh, crap to consultants, but when we have consultants like Wayne that work as though they're just part of the team and and give their all. So with that, I'd like Wayne to kind of put the capstone on this thing, on the, on the water treatment plant, and we take any questions on that. So Wayne, if you can take it away and find the presentation first.
Thank you. Well, good evening, Mayor Butchinsky, members of the City Council. As Todd mentioned, my name is Wayne Gershewski. I'm an engineer with AE2S here in Grand Forks, um, and I've had the the pleasure of being the project manager for a number of different phases of this project and other projects involving the Grand Forks City Water System over my, basically, I think I've been with AE2S now for about twenty-six years. So over that twenty-six years, I've been working with City Grand Forks over that whole time on a number of different projects. So um, this has really been quite a challenging project. It's, it's, it's so large and huge in its, in its complexity, and it's just the overall cost and the magnitude of this project is really, really something to to be involved with. So I've had the pleasure of being the project manager for this. So um, for this evening, I'd like to just provide a little bit of a startup and completion update and a little overview with some photos of the of the water plant as it stands today. Um, I'd like to point out a couple of these really kind of exciting milestones that we've just recently achieved on the project, and uh, kind of where we're gonna go from there. So um, just, just before I start, just to back up just a little bit, but the, the construction contract was actually awarded for this project in, on December first of twenty sixteen. So here we sit on October second of twenty twenty, and we're just now completing this project and putting it in, and have it in operation. So that's, that's quite a, quite a timeframe to build this large piece of infrastructure. And what we've done out there is we've built a twenty-million gallon per day hybrid water treatment plant. And you wonder, what's the word hybrid? What does that really mean? And what what we have out there is we have parallel conventional and membrane treatment trains. And as shown on this graphic here, in in the yellow is the conventional treatment train, pretreatment through softening ozone and biological activated carbon filters. And then on the the south side of the plant, we have in pink shown there, we have pretreatment, ultrafiltration, and reverse osmosis. And then everything else in gray is basically all the support systems, chemical feed systems, storage, all the different things, admin areas, and things that have to support the treatment of the plant. Um, this overall facility is about two hundred and twelve thousand square feet on three different levels. We have a basement on the first floor and a second level. So it, it is a quite, quite a substantial um, um, facility in its, in its own right. Um, the project delivery for this project was a little, was a little unique from something that really, we haven't done a lot in the state of North Dakota. Um, it was, it was delivered through the, what's called Construction Management at Risk, or CMAR. And through that process, um, the CMAR, um, we, the city went through a selection process, selecting a CMAR, CMAR team who happened to be construction engineers in Alaman Shuti. Construction engineers is a local uh, construction firm. Alaman Shuti brings more of a national flavor to the, to the project. They went together as a joint venture, and they were selected as our CMAR for the project. Um, the CMAR then, um, basically bids the project, they broke into fifty-two bid packages. So a lot of bid packages, they put them all together, and they provided the city of Grand Forks with a guaranteed maximum price of a hundred and thirty-three million, nine hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars to complete this project. To date, we've got about a hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred dollar, two, a hundred and thirty-two point two million dollars uh, completed on the project, which would be about ninety-eight point seven percent as of the tenth of September. They, they run about a month behind on pay-up, so they've actually even got additional work completed as we, as I talk here today. Um, so one of our, our major milestones on the project, as Todd had mentioned, is that your new water plant is fully operational as of September thirtieth, twenty twenty. That is, both the conventional and the membrane side of the water treatment plant are now putting, are producing water and putting it into our city distribution system. And the old water treatment plant is, um, as I'll get into in a, in a future slide here, um, going to be disconnected shortly. Um, we've achieved substantial completion on Phase A, which was the conventional side of the plant on July seventeenth of twenty twenty, and we just recently completed substantial completion of Phase B, which was the membrane side of the facility on September thirtieth of twenty twenty, with now our final completion slated for October thirtieth of this year. Um, then now we'll, with those completion dates means something, because what they do is they, they kick into um, into um, service the one-year warranty period for each of those phases of the project. So we'll have a Phase A warranty, warranty period from July eighteenth of this year to July seventeenth of next year, and Phase B from October first of this year through September thirtieth of next year. So we'll be working with the city as we go through this warranty period. Anything that happens, we get the contractor to come back, fix it, keep things going, we'll move through there. Um, remaining work on the project, we have, we have this final downtown water main tie-in, and I think maybe you've all uh, received the notice, um, it's been on the radio today, um, that the uh, Minnesota Avenue down near the intersection of South Forest Street will be shut down this evening at seven PM. All the detour signs and everything will be set up. And beginning tomorrow morning and continuing on Wednesday, they will be excavating the two tie-in points, um, for the, for the final water main disconnect there. They'll cut the thirty-inch water main, and they'll make the tie-in, and as of, on October eighth, and as of that day, which is the next milestone, is that your existing water plant downtown will be fully disconnected from the, from the city's water system, and will no longer produce any water to put into the system. So everything will be on the brand-new water treatment plant after October eighth. Um, this, and then after that, then the street adjacent site restoration will be from October ninth through about the eighteenth, weather permitting. Hopefully, we get some really good weather, which it looks like we have in the forecast. Um, and then we're hoping to open Minnesota Avenue on, by October nineteenth, but potentially a little bit sooner, depending on how construction and how the weather holds out for us, so. Um, also down at the water plant, we'll be continuing with punchless items with various subcontractors, um, just to make sure they finish all their work within all those different bid packages for the project. And we'll continue with the warranty services for over the next year. So just a few photos. This is a, a picture of the exterior of the water plant, um, basically looking at the, the main front entrance of the facility. Um, right now, they're doing some of the final landscaping and whatnot outside on, on the project, so um, we got some real nice weather. This will be, a lot of this will be hydro-seeded, a lot of the various plantings and decorative rock and things will be placed on, on, on and around the facility, and really, we'll have it all looking good here by the time winter rolls around. Um, this is a picture of, up on the second floor of the water plant is the main plant control panel, uh, or control room. Um, this is where the, the water plant guys basically operate the plant twenty-four seven, three sixty-five. Um, it's real focused on, on operator integration into the facility. They have a couple of different workstations, different monitors. They monitor all the treatment plant functions from this very spot. There's a, a lab in the back of this room, um, where they can do their water quality tests. Um, they really don't even have to leave this facility during their shift if if they, if they didn't want to. Um, here's another one of the administrative areas in the plant that's been completed. This larger picture on the, on the left is the operator's um, training and break room. Um, Fred and his guys can all get together, and they can do their, their morning meetings, their, their shift change meetings, whatever they do. There's training sessions on equipment and whatnot take place in this room, um, and and whatnot. So it's, it's a real nice new area for them to actually look outside and get, get to see some of the light of day, take their breaks, and then go back into the facility and continue with their shifts. Uh, this is a shot looking across pretreatment in the plant. Um, this is the very front portion of pretreatment. Water flows from bottom of the screen to the top, uh, through the facility. Um, this is looking down into one of the pretreatment basins as water is actually being processed through. You can see some of the flock materials and coagulated, um, impurities in the water on the, on the kind of greenish portions of that, and that water flows up through the inclined plates and gets collected through some effluent troughs, and the water's much cleaner as it flows from this portion on, through the facility. Um, on the conventional side of the plant, this is just a quick picture of a softening basin within the plant in operation. Um, this is um, one of the more complex um, process, pieces of process, or process equipment in the water treatment plant. This is the ozone generation room. There are two five-hundred-pound-per-day ozone generators, destruct units, all the ozone feed equipment. Everything is in this room, and there's room for two additional ozone generators for future facility expansion if needed. Um, this is a lower level. There's some ozone injection and monitoring panels, um, some equipment that has to be up or maintained daily by the water plant staff to make sure we're getting added, or proper residuals and proper calibrations and whatnot of this equipment. Um, this is a, from the ozone um, process then, the water flows over to these gravity filters. Um, the, starting at the left is the, the very uh, top level of the, of the filtration room. When you walk in, it's very quiet. If you look down into those four filters, the middle picture is what you would see, is the water actually flows in these basins, flows down through the filter. And then below the floor level here, if you look the far right picture, is all the, the spaghetti junction of piping and whatnot to get the water in and out of of these filters and whatnot as it's being processed. Um, now on the membrane side of the plant, this is a, a quick picture of the ultrafiltration membrane basins. There are five of these basins. They're shown on the, the right-hand photo. You look down into those basins, you see uh, the UF submersible membranes um, uh, that are lowered down into the, into the water stream. Um, these actually serve as a, as a pretreatment before the water flows to the um, reverse osmosis system. This is, um, lower down into the plant is some additional ultrafiltration equipment to make those membranes operate. Um, there's all of this, these pumps, control panels, and all these, this type of equipment needs to be in operation to make all that work. Um, this is then a picture of the reverse osmosis equipment. There are three skids. Each one of these membrane skids can produce two million gallons of water per day. Um, and there's also, as shown in the right-hand photo, there's room for two additional skids to be moved into the plant should the facility need additional water treatment plant capacity in the near-term future. We could basically install two new plants without a major water plant expansion. Um, this is then some lower equipment that serves those RO skids up above some pre-filtered equipment and the actual feedwater pumps. So with that, I'll just, I'll bring the presentation to an end. I'll thank you all for your time, and I could surely entertain any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Mr. Vian?
First of all, I want to thank you very much for all the work you've done, because you've been integral to this plant for years, to the designs and following through, so great, great work. Uh, just, maybe just a quick question on the conventional versus the membranes. Are both of those operating a hundred percent of the time, or are you transitioning between the two different treatment systems?
Councilman Vian, um, both treatment trains run a hundred percent of the time. It's on the, on the conventional side, um, it depends on what the, the water, water demand of the city is, the, the plant, with the, way the plant's set up, with the parallel trains and the way that the unit processes are set up, they can run two softening basins or one softening basin. They can run, of the, of the membrane skids, they could run one, two, or three, or two at a time, depending on what they need for their, for the actual demand that, that the city needs at the time. And then there also, you also have to look at what the raw water quality is. Um, if it's, you know, the water coming in in the springtime of the year is very soft, you might not, might not run as much, you know, of one side of the plant or the other. If you're having a major um, taste and odor episode or something from, from either like spring runoff or a large rain or something, the plant has the flexibility to um, feed additional ozone, or, or feed ozone at a different pH level, or they can run additional membrane treatment um, to, to address those taste and odor issues. So now in the spring of the year, when we all get that great smell in the, in the shower, coming out of the tap, you should not see that with this new water treatment plant, so.
All right, thank you. Uh, any other questions? I think uh, the most important factor is we've got a new plant going, and I don't think anybody knows the difference. So that's uh, that's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Two point four is the City of Grand Forks Administration, First Hundred Days and Beyond Overview.
Mr. Fionn, let's try to move this, through this one pretty quickly here.
We will. I just want to hit, hit a couple of high points, and Mayor, you're gonna discuss kind of the way forward. Um, this uh, us as the administration and as US City Council, we've really, I think, made some historic firsts. I want to point those out um, to you. Number one, the NISER School Business Public Administration with the Workforce Development Center, that's the first time we've really had a home of the City of Grand Forks on campus with an office. I think that's a tremendous first that we should be very proud of. Um, I think another big thing is kind of resituating City Hall, and those bids are gonna be coming in um, this month, here in October, about resituating certain apartments. I think that's another long-term thing that we wanted to work on that we've completed and will be completing. Um, the Alara Center naming rights, and I shouldn't even just talk about the Alara Center naming rights of the two million dollar investment over, over the next ten years. Um, the Alara Center itself, we have such committed um, tenants in the Alara Center, they've all committed. And so for the most part, whether you're a suite holder and all those sorts of things, um, Mr. Vian, you're at those meetings, but it's, it's quite a testament to this community that we have um, folks like Alara stepping up, recommitting themselves, but there are many sponsors in that building that have recommitted themselves despite um, the moments we're in with the pandemic. So that's an incredible story to say about our community. On the twenty-one budget, the City Council President said it's gonna be a tough one. I remember him saying that back in the day, but uh, working with Mayor Butchinsky and US City Council, I think that really did come together quite, quite nicely and quite well. And I just want to point out a few things. You know, with a, with a property tax cut, though minimal, minimal uh, utility rate increases, and you should know, city employees are quite pleased with getting a thousand dollar across-the-board raise. And um, in particular, those men and women that are, are on the front lines doing a lot of activities, whether you're an equipment operator, or you're a water operator, or police officers, they really appreciated that a thousand dollars across the board, so you should know that. Um, Tanji let us know it's only a two-and-a-half percent increase on the health care, and so that's gonna be another big deal for city employees. We were projecting seven percent, it's only two-and-a-half percent. That's a big deal for employees taking more pay home than being gobbled up by um, benefits. Um, we, as Marie has told you um, previous to, that we've performed remarkably well through this, this COVID pandemic. Um, from where we started in March and where we predicted in April, um, it's an incredible, incredibly good story about where we're at, and, and there's several bullets that notate that. I think working with um, our UND and the Grand Forks Public Schools, Terry Brenner's gonna come up here, or Dr. Terry Brenner, is gonna come up and how we've created continuity over these last several weeks, so that's a, I think, a terrific story. I also want to highlight um, continuity of operations. We have, uh, you know, we have, we've had the fire department up here, we have had the water works department up here- We have, you know, we've had the fire department up here, we have had the water works department up here. The fact that we have since this spring, in the midst of this pandemic, whether it's been the awful police shooting, all the ramifications that came after that in this country, flood action planning throughout that, that we've really moved forward with continuity of operations throughout the City of Grand Forks. And we haven't had to come here and tell you some bad news about how we weren't able to perform day to day. That's an incredible story, I think, too. The mayor has really had a focus on this business friendly mindset and we're going to talk about a little bit of that later on the action items, but really focused on the growth side, healthcare and this U A S tech sector. And those are two areas that we can really, we see an ability for us to grow our economy and there's been a lot of focus on that from Mayor Bochensky and the City Council. Herald Building, we've talked about that. Also want to note, this has kind of gotten lost in the shuffle. As you recall, we integrated the U N D public transportation system with the city's system. That got integrated in August, nobody knew the difference, so it must have been pretty successful. Otherwise, we would have heard a lot about that. But that's another successful partnership and integration that we did and things are going well in that regards. So with that, I think a lot of good news despite all the challenges that we've had. And with that, Mayor, I would turn it over to you for what's next with us as administration as importantly as U S City Council members.
Thank you, I want to take a moment, I think it's certainly a team and a collaborative effort. The city staff has done an amazing job. I want to just take a moment and thank the council members individually. Mr. Weigle, I appreciate your work with the Public Safety Pension Plan as well as your guidance on the city prosecutor early on. Ms. Dockler, really appreciate your welcoming efforts and your helping with that transition as well as your work with keeping the, implementing a plan for safety in city offices. Mr. Weber, really enjoyed collaborating with you on the Nissler Building and you've become the COVID expert and certainly increased your knowledge in all things COVID. Certainly appreciate that. Council Vice President Mock, we certainly appreciate you taking over the VP role and your leadership there and appreciate all your insights on all things engineering. Mr. Kwame, I appreciate your work on the Nissler contract as well as taking a dive into the RFPs and the bidding process. I think that's been crucial. President Sandy, appreciate all your work on the budget. Certainly your guidance to me is coming into a new role as well as your continued leadership on the council. Mr. Veen, I may have had the most phone conversations with you and I've certainly enjoyed that. I appreciate your work on the Alara Center Commission, the Red River Valley Water Supply, the Garrison Diversion and the Lake Agazis Water Authority. So certainly appreciate the collaboration and hope to continue in the future. As we look at the next hundred days, it's going to be continuing to manage and lead the COVID nineteen pandemic response. It's, we're working on relining some of the city departments. There's going to be a lot of work on reforming the base retention process and strategies. I've had multiple trips out to the Air Force Base and developed a good relationship with Colonel Pringle, Commander Pringle, as well as the next in line commander, Colonel Curry. And I've had meetings with two out of the three of our congressional delegation, with Senator Kramer and Representative Armstrong. We're looking forward to moving Grand Forks forward from the economic development front. It's been a challenging hundred days and I'm looking forward to the future. So thank you city staff and council for all your work. From there, we're moving on to two point five.
African arts arena funding request.
Dr. Corico, step up, sir. So today, they're going to give us a presentation of what they've been working on and we're going to be sending this over to the Public Arts Commission and see if they can help us in funding. Dr. Corico has been a member of the NFI stakeholder meetings, we've gotten to know each other pretty well. He's also a state co-chair in a role that he's just gotten into and pretty exciting. So thanks for all that you do, why don't you tell us about the African arts arena?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council President Sandy, Vice President Mock, City Council Member. I have to say it's an honor to be here. I've been in Grand Forks for almost ten years now and I've been living in North Dakota for almost sixteen years. It has always been a dream to come in front of the City Council Member to talk about something that we're doing in the community to make our community more welcoming. As Mayor Bochensky said, my name is Hamza Corico. People like to call me Dr. Corico, I don't really know what that means. I like more to focus on what I'm doing as an artist. So I came to the U S, to the U S fifteen years ago and then, you know, I moved up here with little to no English. And I put in the work and now I can sit and stand in front of City Council Member and talk about what I'm doing, which for me is a progress. So I am the Executive Director and the founder of the African Arts Arena. We've been around for almost ten years trying to use art to create a space first for all immigrant and in particular immigrant of African descent so that, you know, we can gather and talk about ourselves, our pain here and move forward through arts. So as part of our two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-two action plan, the African Art Arena is adding a new program and other activity which are pretty much tailored toward a more inclusive Grand Forks. And also as part of the W C R, you know, initiative, we feel like the African Art Arena can take on a more, you know, a very important role, which is pretty much like reaching out to all the NFI community member, which is new American foreign-born immigrant so that we can come together and see how we can reach out to our new home member and talk about some of the difficult subjects using arts. So when we were reflecting on what we need to do, it came out to me and to, you know, the community that we needed to have a space, a space where we can go to, you know, and talk about things, a space from where we can reach out to the community. And that has been a little difficult to do because of, you know, the funding issue and the support that we need. So today, what I wanted to talk about is one of the projects that we're running now, which is called Under the Baobab. Under the Baobab is one of the many projects that we wanted to do, which is pretty much like inviting one artist from our community or maybe outside our community and then ask them to talk a little bit about how arts can play an important role in creating a welcoming community. Because I do believe that when things get really difficult, the only language we can speak to solve issue is often arts. So just a little story, in two thousand ten, when I moved up here and I was so eager to, you know, do my arts and do, you know, some dance classes, I still remember a face of a little young girl, I cannot even remember her name, who after one of my presentations came over and looked at me and said, okay, sir, can I be your student once you open your dance classes? It's like ten years ago. And then during our NFI meeting with Mayor Bochensky, there was also a young lady from Nepal who, you know, pretty much with tear in her eyes, you know, begging for help, you know, saying that, okay, well, as a youth of immigrant community, she's feeling a lot of pain, which is like getting to a point where she wanted to name it a mental health issue because there's nowhere for her to go as a new immigrant member to kind of cry or talk to somebody. And she clearly mentioned arts as a gateway, you know, as a way of coping with the situation. Then the mayor looked at me and said, well, Hamza, it seems like somebody is asking you to do something. I said, yes, it has always been my call, but, you know, for some reason we were not able to get the resources or the support that we need to start something like that. So we kind of feel like, okay, well, maybe coming in front of the City Council, telling them about what we are doing in the community and maybe the important role we might play can maybe, you know, shift the conversation and maybe bring more attention to what we are doing. So I think that's what I have for you today and then I'll be more than happy to answer any questions, you know, so that I don't waste your time.
Well, thank you and thank you for coming before us. Is there any questions for Dr. Corico? This time, Mr. Weber, please.
Just a quick clarification, under the baobab, this is an important tree in African culture. Could you tell us a little bit about what under the baobab is?
So the baobab is pretty much like a notion of humbling. So for instance, we look at knowledge as the baobab tree, which is one of the biggest tree in Africa. It's so big to the point that no one person can handle that, so you need support. You need pretty much like a whole village holding hand to hand and circum that baobab. So that has always been the guiding philosophy anytime we're trying to do something somewhere, especially when it had to do with knowledge. So knowledge is baobab, or baobab is knowledge.
Thank you, any other questions? Well, thank you, sir, for your time.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Bochensky. Thank you.
Take care. Moving on to two point six.
Okay, COVID nineteen update.
So we've got a special guest here today too. So let's, we're going to go through a few slides and we're going to have our special guest Superintendent Brenner come up and then we'll make Mr. Dulitz and Ms. Swanson available after that. I guess I can brief if you want to.
Yep, I got the slides, man.
Perfect. So Mr. Dulitz has been updating these daily and I think it's been a good resource. He's looking, actually this week, he's going to be working on setting some new metrics that are more in line with the White House Task Force metrics by using local data. So we're definitely excited to see what comes of that. And he'll be presenting a much bigger presentation on Monday, so next Monday, a week from today. So he's got a lot of work to do between now and then, despite his regular work. That's where we're sitting today, can you move to the next slide? As you can see at the top here, that's our cases per day, per hundred thousand. We did hit that peak and we had flattened out, it's kind of starting to creep up. So it's something that's concerning, but we definitely need to keep an eye on it. Go ahead, Todd, to the next one. Thank you, and here's the governor's risk level assessment, we're still in the yellow. You can see the metrics they're using is more of a fourteen day average instead of a seven day and it seems to be a little more of a lagging indicator where our seven day seems to be a little bit more of a leading indicator. And then there's, Mr. Dulitz put together a SWOT analysis, which I think was really helpful because it goes beyond the data and the charts, looking at our strengths and I'm sure Superintendent Brenner can speak to this. We have managed to keep it out of that zero to fourteen age group in the school age population, keeping the case numbers low there and doing very well compared to peer counties. And that's a tribute to all the work they've done at the public schools. I think they've done a phenomenal job. And we continue to test well, still averaging more than five hundred tests per day in the county. But there are some weaknesses, we're still seeing some continued spread. Looking at about twenty-two cases per day are still popping up and everybody needs to do their part to keep those numbers down. Go ahead to the next. Opportunities, we continue to work to try to keep the testing time from test to results down so that we can isolate and quarantine as quickly as possible. And they've kind of changed the prioritization now of long-term care. So some of our other tests and our sort of big testing events that we do, we're getting a little bit delayed results. So those aren't coming back as quickly as they were before and the focus by the governor has been on the long-term care. And moving on to the threats, that's certainly right in lines with that. I think we've done a great job and senior housing has done a phenomenal job of keeping their vulnerable population safe and they need to continue to do so. It's been starting to creep up a little bit, but if you look at the way it's been handled in Fargo and in Grand Forks, it's done a, they've done a much better job of keeping their population safe within senior housing. Just looking at Burley, Ward, Morton, Stark and Williams County, these are all outside of Burley, counties that have less population and have, you know, doubled to triple the cases in the sixty-plus demographic, which is one we've been watching very closely. And when you have more cases in that age group, you end up with more hospitalizations and more deaths from this unfortunately. So that's who we need to protect and to continue to do so. Let's now introduce Superintendent Brenner to give us an update on the school district and then we'll have open up the council questions. Thank you for joining and waiting, sir.
Hey, thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Terry Brenner, Superintendent Grand Forks Public Schools. You'll just have to let me know if you can't hear me. Is that fair? Okay, thank you very much. First of all, on behalf of both school boards, the City Board, the Grand Forks Air Force Base School Board, we extend our gratitude to all of you for the gift, four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars that really is bridging the gap in our COVID pandemic environment. Your contribution to the school district has gone to P P E supplies, custodial costs, cleaning supplies, isolation room attendance, those are the people who are helping us manage sick kids when they come down to the office. We're just making an assumption right away that those students are sick, they have COVID and we're treating them that way until we're told otherwise. Online virtual teachers and EdMentum, that's our online learning platform for distance learners. So between your gift, your offering, along with the G E Foundation of a hundred thousand dollars, we've found a little room to breathe with the mounting COVID-related expenses. Our district is grateful for the partnership we have with Mayor Bochensky, City Administrator Todd Phelan and Grand Forks County Public Health Director Debbie Swanson as we collectively navigate our way through this pandemic. And interestingly, I queried some larger superintendents across the state this morning to see if any other city councils had reached out to their school districts like you have to us. And the answer was no. So what you have done is remarkable and you are standing tall with your generosity and our public school district certainly appreciates it. So today we've started our sixth week. The odds in Vegas a few weeks ago is that we'd be done after one week. So here we are. We have one thousand three hundred students in our distance learning program and sixty-one hundred face to face. In our pre-K through grade eight environment, we have students every day. We're the only large school district who has that model at this time. Others are going to join us here in the next week or two. Grades nine through twelve, we're in a hybrid model, students are coming to us every other day. As indicated earlier, we've hired fourteen additional distance learning teachers, something we hoped that we wouldn't have to do, but we just didn't have enough staff to pull off the instructional model when that many students and families elected to keep their kids at home. So those fourteen additional teachers are also mentors and coaches. They don't all specialize in content area. So in the event that a sixth grader through grade twelve might need some help with advanced math or an AP Biology, for example, those mentors or coaches will link them up with some of our people we have on staff. We're in the face-to-face model. And then we're contracting services with some of our teachers who are moonlighting for us to work with those students in the content area. So for some students, an asynchronous learning environment at home is great. For others, it can be really frustrating and it can be a challenge and we know that. And in this, in this day of mental health, social, emotional concerns that we have for many of our students, that wouldn't be our choice to have students spending time outside of school. So it really was important for us to start the school year as close on time as possible. There was lots of discussion about the middle level and whether we should have a hybrid model or not. And it came right down to we wanted those kids making connections with our adults on a day-to-day basis. Cognitively, they're just not as developed as our high school kids who would be staying home. So our distance learning teachers at the six through twelve level, they have between forty and sixty students as a cohort on their caseload. And for a K five distance learning students, we had to hire an additional three teachers. That's in that whole composite of fourteen. But we also had a number of teachers volunteer to be a distance learning teacher. So we don't have teachers in both environments, they're either in one or the other. And every student has a device. We invested some of the early ESER funds that came our way into technology. We upgraded our system so that has actually taken a little pressure off of our general fund. So every student grades K through twelve has either an iPad or a Chromebook or some other type of device. Additionally, we were able to, through some granting funds and through the generosity of the Lamarru Foundation, make sure that all of our families are connected at home. So with those devices, students bring those back and forth every day in the event that we have to pivot. We may shut down a classroom, we may have to shut down a school, we may have to close down the whole school district. And then our teachers would be ready to go within forty-eight to seventy-two hours with online learning for everybody. We're certainly pleased that parents had a choice between the two models that I've already explained. We did ask parents, once they made that choice, that they would commit to it for the first twelve weeks at the elementary level and for the first semester at the secondary level. We certainly have made provisions and accommodations for some students where it just wasn't working for them. So we allowed them to come back to brick and mortar. You know, I'm just so proud of our students, I get emotional when I talk. I get emotional when I talk about this. Our students and our staff are masking up, practicing great hygiene, and physically distancing whenever they can. The CDC guidelines have been nonissues at the school level. When we started talking about masks last May in preparation for this school year, our high school principals, the first thing that came out of their mouths was, this is going to be another hat-and-hoodie issue. And they felt like they were going to have to police it. That has been a nonissue. As a matter of fact, kids are policing it themselves and reminding each other. The sooner, the more often we keep our masks on, the farther apart we stay, the more opportunities we have to be together sooner in this environment rather than later. So, to date, the overall number of confirmed COVID-related student and adult cases is small. I've been very intentional about not releasing numbers. I'm pleased when the county puts numbers up on the screen that represents our entire colony. And the reason we've done that is twofold. We have a significant contagious disease policy that really prohibits us from releasing information that could identify any students or staff for that matter. So, we've been very careful about that. But what should be reassuring for you is that number that you saw up there ages 0-14 and how small that number was, that's exactly what we're experiencing. But even in that smaller number environment, the close contact piece is pretty big. So, we can have one case that might touch 50 to 60 kids who end up out in close contact. So, with the governor's recent change in direction with close contacts, along with the North Dakota Department of Health, that might, this overlining in that might provide a little relief for some of our students who are out 14 days or some of our adults who have been out that long as well. For some of the challenges that we're having thus far is filling substitute teacher positions along with paraprofessional roles at the school level in the event people are out. Teachers have felt overwhelmed with the amount of planning, grading, catching up students who are absent in this new environment. Students in a hybrid model prioritizing their schoolwork and their sleep habits when they're in that every-other-day model, some like to stay up pretty late and sleep in pretty late and then have questions for teachers perhaps at the wrong time of the day. The budget is, this is going to put enormous pressure on our budget, this COVID environment. And we do have some other extending circumstances called facilities that's putting some pressure on our budget as well. We were expecting to be up a little more than 100 students this year based on our demographers projections, and that was all prior to the pandemic. We are not up 100 students, we're pretty flat. As a matter of fact, we saw an uptick in homeschooling, probably 78 to 80 students went that route because they didn't either want distance learning or face-to-face. We hope we can get those students back because that's a projected big number in our budget. COVID-related expenses overall could be near the $3.5 to $4 million range. Again, as I mentioned earlier, we had some relief with the first $2 million from ESER that came. We just recently received another $1.6 million through the CARES Act carryover. But what's important in this number is that sunset's on December 31st. And there's, excuse me, there's no way that we can earmark and encumber that money by December 31st. So, we're hoping after the election that there's going to be some adjustments to that, and we can carry that into the 2021 year. Our partnership with Grand Forks County Public Health, primarily with Debbie Swanson, Ashley Nelson, Alan Anderson, and Teresa Knox has been absolutely outstanding. Between their work and all of our principals being points of contact, we're having conversations at least two times a week about COVID-related activity, close contacts, and contact tracing. So, this has been just a great win-win for us, and we're grateful that Debbie and her team are not only part of our planning right now, but they were part of our back-to-school planning and developing our smart restart plan. Other than that, that's kind of everything COVID. I just wanted to highlight a couple of other things that are happening in the district. We commissioned a diversity, equity, and inclusivity committee to provide guidance on including some very new and specific features in our strategic plan. Councilwoman Katie Dockler, along with about 20 other community members, are a part of that committee, and they've been a great influence on drilling down to the core of cultural competency that we want to see in not only our students, but our staff as well. And finally, our facility task force has been doing its work in the pandemic environment and hopefully in the post-pandemic environment. We have a core committee of about 40 community members who are looking at our facilities from top to bottom, side to side. They spent March, April, May, almost weekly in Zoom meetings, anywhere between an hour and two hours, learning about our facilities, the infrastructure, the challenges that we've had. And most recently, they just completed tours of 10 of our campuses, and now they'll start putting together the metrics and the options. And by the early part of January, they will make a recommendation to our school board about what our school district could look like in the near future. So, with that, that's what I have as far as a high-level overview. I know you've got a huge agenda tonight. I usually sit on that side, so I appreciate what it's like to be sitting there listening to person after person come to the microphone.
Well, thank you for your thorough presentation. I think yourself and the school board's done a phenomenal job. You know, in a tough situation, very dynamic, very changing, and I'm sure you've had intense pressure from all sides. But in the end of that, to be, you know, an example for the whole state on how to do this and how to do it right is pretty amazing. So, is there, open up to any questions that the council might have for Superintendent Brenner? You've done something that no one's been able to do. You've created silence among council.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Dulets or Ms. Swanson at this time? All right, we'll move on then to, three, public hearings and second readings of ordinances.
3.1, this is a public hearing on application for property tax incentive for new or expanding business from JR Investments Incorporated.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Thank you. This item is before you. We've had, we were before you, I think, September 8th last. And we have checked with Department of Commerce, as I said then. This is eligible, and we'll stand for any questions.
Sounds good. Anybody here for the public hearing on that front? Doesn't look like it will close, otherwise, any questions, comments? Got a motion by President Sandy, second by Councilman Mervine. Any other questions, comments? Move to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.2.
Public hearing, a resolution to vacate pedestrian walkway portion of an easement lying within Blair Buckle Citrum Edition located at 1510, 1514 Charwood Court and 2233, 2237 Springfoot Court.
Thank you, Mr. Gangler. If you want to give, you know, you and Mr. Grasser have been out to the site. I know Mr. Miller is in attendance as well, some other neighbors, I believe. We're looking really tonight for some new information. This has gone through planning, has gone through council once. I think it's a tough situation, but why don't you give the update, and then I'll have a couple of comments, and then we can open it up to public hearing.
Sure. Mayor, city council members, if you recall, the Planning and Zoning Commission took action on this request to vacate the sidewalk easement portion of the overall 20-foot sidewalk and utility easement. After that, on August 17th, of course, the council unanimously supported the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations of denial. Nothing's really changed in terms of conditions or the lay of the land, so to speak. And as the mayor indicated, there are members in the audience. We do need to focus on the idea that tonight's action is simply to either approve or deny the request. If there's to be any other further actions or discussions, those probably would be more appropriate at a subsequent time rather than the particular public hearing tonight. So, with that, I would entertain any questions or turn it back to Mayor Bochinski.
Sounds good. And then, we'll open up to public hearing. And Mr. Miller, I just wanted to say something to you first. I think you came in and, you know, you showed up, and you gave a very impassioned plea last time. You can step forward if you want. I think we all appreciate that. This is a very tough situation. The south 10 feet of your property is both public and private. And as much as a person has private property rights, and they need to be respected, in this case, there's an easement there, and that's the law. There's only so much we can do in our hands. People are allowed to walk through there currently. What they're not allowed to do is create a nuisance and to pester you and your family. And I think that was the most disturbing part about the whole thing and something that I wasn't happy to hear about. And, you know, I hope that that's, there's been some amends made there. You can certainly speak tonight. I don't think there's going to be much that's going to be able to change anybody's opinion. I think it's tough, but there are other options. So, I hope that you could reach out to City Engineer Al Grasser or Mr. Gangler. There's some other options that can help, you know, whether it's a privacy fence or a sidewalk and some other options should this move forward today. So, please, if you wish.
I'd like to say, you know, I'm still collecting evidence. I still have trespassing issues. I mean, it's nothing new. People running through our front yard to get to the easement. It's just the overall design, and it's, you know, the way the layout is, it's really not wide enough to put up a fence or anything. So, there's no way to even give ourselves some privacy from it. So, it's just kind of a sore thumb that there's nothing we can do. We're just kind of stuck. So, that's all I have to say.
I know engineering has been out there, has done some site surveys, visited with you, and, you know, they might have a solution. I think, you know, continue talking with them. You know, like I said, it's a tough situation. It's the law, it's gone through here. You know, we'll see how it votes, but if it does go down, know that there may be some other ways to possibly ease it for you and your family. Is there any other public comment on the matter that's any different than previous public comment? Or, you know, feel free to come up and speak. Otherwise, I'll look to council for comments. Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing, and we'll open it up to council. Mr. Sandy?
I don't think anything's changed in my mind without any new evidence. I would move to uphold the recommendation of both the Planning and Zoning Commission and the city council, the previous meeting, to deny the vacation.
Do we have a second on that motion? Mr. Weigl, seconds. Any other questions or comments? Certainly a tough situation. Mr. Veen, please.
Just one quick comment. I represent the property owners that sit in my ward. I did go out and try to meet with them, too, and we looked for alternatives. I'd gladly meet with Al Grasser again to see if there's something else that we could do because it is an unfortunate situation. I just don't know if I have a good solution for it. So, add me to that list if I can help tomorrow.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Vice President Mock, please.
Were we going to look at moving that electrical box? Was that a possibility?
Tonight, we're only speaking on the vacation. I think the other matters we can certainly look at, and that's why I would...
But staff is still working on that.
Yes, it has been looked at with some estimates.
We've got an estimate on the sidewalk, depending upon moving that and how, anywhere between $10,000 and $30,000 to put the sidewalk in. Any other questions or comments from council? Seeing, oh? Do we have any other? Okay. Well, we'll reopen the public comment section. Go ahead, Mr. Miller.
I'm sorry, I wanted to make something just clear. I know this might be tabled another time, but I just wanted to say it. There's a law saying it's the, it was written like 1982, that all easements built after that or before that, sorry. The, all easements before that, the city could not force a sidewalk to put in unless there was a 51% agreement between all property owners. There was the exact opposite. There is 100% of the property owners want it gone and want it vacated. So, I just wanted to just put that in there that we're not going to agree to putting in a sidewalk. I mean, it'd be different to move in the utility box, but just pointing that out, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
That helps to clarify. Close the public comments. We have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any other comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion will carry. Moving on to four, action items. Ah, sorry, Ms. Ferguson, I know, I was waiting for Maureen to give us the 4.1 there. Do you want to do the?
Mayor, we should, we should pull the ones that we want to pull.
Oh, we want, okay.
We would like, staff would like 4.1, 4.2, and 4.5.
Was there any other items that need to be pulled before the consent agenda, before we move on to speed up the process here, other than 4.1, 4.2, and 4.5? Council members, anything?
All right, sorry about that. Then, 4.1, yes, is Thurber Memorial Scholarship.
So, let's, yeah, let's move.
Can we make a motion on the consent agenda? Do we have approval?
Sounds good. Let's, 4.3, 4.4, 4.6, 4.7, 4.8, 4.9, 4.10, 4.11, and 4.12. We have a motion from President Sandy, second from Councilmember Kwame. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those motions carry. 4.1.
All right, and then the Thurber Memorial Scholarship Funding Request of 2,000.
And Ms. Ferguson will speak on that behalf. Thank you for coming out today.
You're welcome, thank you. You could have just snuck this into the consent agenda, too, if you wanted. That would have been fine. Good evening, Mayor Bochinski and members of the council. Many of you know me, my name is Mara Ferguson. I'm a resident of Grand Forks. I'm here today to discuss the Charles Thurber Memorial Scholarship with all of you. Several weeks ago, I emailed you all to invite you to memorial service that was nearly 138 years overdue, an interfaith service for Charles Thurber. Charles Thurber was a black man who was lynched from the Great Northern Railroad Bridge in 1882. On October 24th, 1882, an angry mob of an estimated 2,000 Grand Forks residents forcibly removed Mr. Thurber from a holding cell at the courthouse and hanged him from the railroad bridge on the Red River. Mr. Thurber had been accused of raping two white women. By many accounts, there is little to no evidence that he had raped these women, and in fact, records show that later, one woman recanted in a jailhouse interview, stated that Charles Thurber was having a consensual relationship with the other. Mr. Thurber was not assumed to be innocent until proven guilty, nor was he afforded due process of the law. Additionally, no one was held responsible for his lynching as merely the entire town was implicated in his death. It was the first lynching that occurred in what was later to become the state of North Dakota. The Daily Herald, which is now the Grand Forks Herald, wrote that no mourners were present when he was buried. This summer, I attended a vigilante's Grand Forks that was held to honor the wives of George Floyd, Officer Cody Holti, and Lola Moore. When I listened to the impassioned speeches made by residents of our community, my mind drifted back to hearing about the horrible death of Charles Thurber. And I knew in my heart that it was finally time to get his memorial done so our community could say his name, tell his story, could say his name, tell his story, and acknowledge this brutal piece of Grand Forks history to pay our respects. I called Pete here at the city in June, and I told him that I wanted to lead yet another push to get the memorial completed. With the help of Susan Caraher and Chuck Fleming from the Grand Forks Historical Preservation Commission, and Kim Greendahl from the Grand Forks Greenway, we took steps together to get the ball rolling. Though I was the most recent person to renew these efforts, there were many before me who worked towards building this memorial. In fact, the Thurber Memorial took 23 years to complete. Originally, the Thurber Memorial was initiated in 1997 by Central High School teacher Mrs. Audra Cutsmell's sophomore English class and the Central High School Black Culture Club. The Grand Forks City Council approved the memorial with support from Mayor Pat Owens, and the city approved $500 in funding to Mrs. Cutsmell's students to build the memorial. However, we all know what happened to our community in the spring of 1997. We were hit hard by the flood. Because of the sheer magnitude of the natural disaster our community endured, Mr. Thurber's memorial plans fell to the wayside. Advocacy for the building of the memorial was resumed several times in the years later by Rick Rybacki in 2012 and by Natasha Thomas and Amber Finley in 2017. Throughout the years, the memorial has been approved by all the right people: Grand Forks City Council, the Army Corps of Engineers, the Greenway Technical Staff, and the Grand Forks Historic Preservation Commission. Language was approved for the memorial by Grand Forks City Attorney Howard Swanson in 2018. All that was needed in June to bring the memorial to fruition was the funding. Equipped with my research and in my strong feeling of duty to get this done, on June 18th, I started a GoFundMe page to crowdfund the memorial. I joked with Pete that I could raise those funds in a day, no problem, not thinking that's actually what was going to happen, which is what did. It took about 23 hours to raise the $3,000 that we needed. The Thurber Memorial gained support from over 100 donors, as well as a bit of media attention. In fact, one of the pieces written by NPR News was picked up by the Associated Press. Grand Forks gained national attention for coming together as a community and doing all we could to right this wrong. Once the memorial was ordered and a timeline was established, I set about organizing a memorial service for Mr. Thurber with the help of Reverend Tawanda Miranda of St. Matthew's Church in Thompson. The service brought together Christian, Jewish, and Islamic faith leaders, along with other community leaders, and was attended by over 100 people. What was so immensely powerful about the service was not only that we provided Mr. Thurber the closure that he had deserved for 138 years, but that by attending the service, our community used its collective power to rewrite the ending of Mr. Thurber's story. Years from now, when someone chooses to research this awful moment in Grand Forks history, they will see that the Grand Forks residents of today chose to acknowledge his wrongful death because they cared. To date, we have raised just under $8,000. $3,000 of that has been given to the city to fund the memorial, its installation, and a future bench and concrete slab. Kim Greendahl has applied for this change with the Army Corps of Engineers, and we are waiting for that approval right now. The remaining funds, roughly $4,700, have gone to the Grand Forks Community Foundation to build the Charles Thurber Memorial Scholarship, a fund intended to provide scholarships to high school students who demonstrate a plan to commit to anti-racist work. If we can build this fund to $10,000 within five years, the fund will last in perpetuity, forever keeping the memory of Charles Thurber alive within our community. I'm here today because Mayor Botenski spoke to me after the service and stated that the city would like to give what was approved 23 years ago. Audra Mel and Mayor Botenski also met and discussed fortifying the city's donation to make up for all of the years that this project went undone. I'm here today to voice my support of this and to encourage all of you to support the Thurber Memorial Scholarship to help us reach our goal. Your donation will show the community at large that we live in a city and a community that cares about doing the right thing and wants to foster that spirit in future generations as well. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. I have one more thing to read for you. It's a letter from Mrs. Audra Mel. Audra taught at Central in 1997. She brought her students to present at city council, and one of the cool things about working on this project was getting to know her and several of her students. It was many of their first interaction with city government and was a very positive memory for a lot of these students. So this is from Audra. She says, "Dear council members, I want to thank Mara Ferguson for reading this letter on my behalf. My name is Audra Mel, and I was a 24-year-old English teacher at Grand Forks Central High School in 1997. I'm the teacher whose students brought the concept of a historical marker to city council 23 years ago and had the initiative approved. I was teaching the classic novel To Kill a Mockingbird when this idea took flight. My assignment to my students on that faraway day was to see what examples they could find of racial injustice in our local community, historical or present, and opportunities to emulate the example of the novel's main character, Atticus Finch, who serves as a moral hero and model of integrity for lawyers today. And that is when we discovered the tragic story of Charles Thurber. My students dug in. They went to the library. They found the microfiche of the century-old newspaper clippings, and we learned the heartbreaking story of the lynching of Charles Thurber. We read about the accusations, his attempt to flee, his capture, his proclamation of innocence from his jail cell to the newspaper reporter, and his stance that the relationship he had had with a white woman was very much consensual, and that he denied the additional accusation from a second white woman, an accusation that sadly, 20 years later, was retracted. We read about the mob who overtook the lawmen who were trying to protect Mr. Thurber, and we read with horror the far-too-graphic details of his murder. No due processes, no trial, vigilante justice doled out based solely on the color of this man's skin. My students were stunned and outraged. They struggled with the urge to walk through a space-time continuum and save Mr. Thurber, but there was no time machine and never would be. As the conversations in my classroom progressed, what should we do? What can we do? An idea unfolded and it gave momentum. What about a memorial, they said. Perhaps a historical marker of some kind, I suggested. My students were longing for something to acknowledge the darkness of this event and restore the dignity of Mr. Charles Thurber. We could not give him back his life, but we could give him back his name. We could not undo what had been done, but we could stand up and say it happened, and it was wrong. My students wanted to follow the lead of Atticus Finch into Kill a Mockingbird to create their own response to the destruction of due process, presumed innocence, and racial injustice. So a group of students and myself met with Mayor Pat Owens, who is still known today for her genuine warmth and kindness. I will never forget her welcoming us into her office and asking us what we wanted to do and why. I was so proud of my students for their passion, their conviction, and their desire to make a difference, as they articulately explained to Mayor Owens the story of Charles Thurber in their own words, and why they felt this marker should be placed in the city. She invited them to present to city council for approval and funding, and they did. It was put to a vote, and the Grand Forks City Council unanimously agreed to fund the marker for Charles Thurber. My students were ecstatic. Details would be determined in the spring. However, that year's spring did not come to Grand Forks with flowers and butterflies. That year's spring came with torrents of destruction, fire, loss, and fear, and the dream of righting the wrong that was done to Mr. Thurber was washed away in the waters of the Red River. But today, the flame my students lit on that faraway day, the flood extinguished, has been reignited. Just a few short weeks ago, their dream of a historical marker, acknowledging this tragedy and restoring the dignity of Charles Thurber, now stands on the banks of the Red River, and I thank the city of Grand Forks for your endorsement of this initiative and fulfillment of this dream. However, I am writing this letter to underscore one remaining gap in history that you have the power to fulfill and to restore what the flood stole all those years ago. The funds originally pledged by the city have not been realized, and today's Grand Forks City Council holds the key to the final piece of upholding the legacy of your council predecessors and Mayor Owens. I would like to personally request that the city council fulfill this legacy and pledge not only the original pledge of $500, but multiply it appropriately and apply it to the scholarship that will allow Charles Thurber's name to persist in perpetuity. As your 1997 city council predecessors unanimously agreed, none of us can give back Mr. Thurber his life, but we can give him back his name. And by contributing to the scholarship, the 2020 city of Grand Forks will now complete with the 1997 city of Grand Forks could not. Thank you, Audra Mel.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Ms. Doppler, please.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the funds to go towards the scholarship.
We have a second? Mr. Sandy?
I'm happy to second. I'm curious as to what fund the $2,000 is coming on.
The plan was a one-time fund, or once, it's once, it's not every year. It was going to come from 2163 economic development for strategic initiatives, quality of life.
Happy to second that.
Second from council member Sandy. Any other questions, comments? Ms. Mock, please.
How close are you to the $10,000? Is there an effort to get there?
So right now, we have 1,700 at the community foundation. $3,000 was pledged by the labor union, and so they will commit to that. So that would put us at 4,700.
And then plus this $2,000?
Correct. So that would put us at 6,700. We do have five years to get to the $10,000. When I first met with Becca and Amelia at the community foundation, she said, you know, it needs to be $10,000 for a permanent endowment, and I thought, oh, I've put so much work into this. I don't know if I have any more, but I did. So I continued and intend to continue until we get that $10,000 fold.
Wonderful. And then people would be able to apply for that through the community foundation?
Correct. Yep. Once we receive, once we get to the $10,000 goal, my intention is to establish a small but diverse committee to decide what the details of the scholarship fund will be, and I intend for it to be open to any high school student, freshman through senior.
Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, we have a motion, a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Well, as in '97, it carries unanimously. Thank you for your time, Ms. Ferguson.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
4.2 is Block 5 LLC Tax Increment Financing TIF Pre-Application.
Mr. Fionn, hold on one second. Mr. Kwame?
I'd just like to abstain. Make a motion to abstain.
Request, I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I'd like to request someone to make a motion. I don't know the process. Thank you.
So you abstained due to a conflict of interest. Is that the motion you made, Mr. Sandy?
Yes.
Do we have a second? Ms. Doppler, seconds. Mr. Gosta, did you want to speak on this so we can make this clear in the future that we're doing it the right way?
Yeah. When you've got a conflict of interest, what should happen is the uninterested council members can allow you to vote if they so choose. So if there's a motion to allow Mr. Kwame to vote, you can certainly do that, and then you can participate. If that motion doesn't pass, then you'd be excused from voting on the matter. So the better way to handle it is to have a motion to recognize the conflict and to allow, the motion would be whether to allow Mr. Kwame, or council member Kwame, to participate in the voting.
Do we want to go that route and withdraw our motions, or we just, let's move forward for now and we'll do better in the future? We have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. You are conflicted and you're out. So, thank you.
But at this point, we could make another motion to compel him to vote or to allow him to vote?
You could. I guess I'm interpreting this motion to mean that you've decided not to allow him to participate.
He should probably, yeah, list what, just listed as a conflict. But we're fine now. Let's just move on.
Okay.
Mr. Fionn.
List the conflict if anybody would like.
Mayor Botenski, members of the city council. We polled this item because this TIF application was not at the community hall, but we want to move things along. So it's a really terrific investment. If we can make this happen, it's the St. John's Building, Demers and Third historic building right across from Town Square, and Mr. Mike Kuntz, I believe is the owner and he's the applicant, as a developer of this particular project. So similar to, and this project has been before you before, but now we have new ownership, a similar but different project. It is a, again, as it's noted in the summary, it's a mixed-use building with commercial, studio, up to three-bedroom apartments. There is an annex that's connected to the St. John's Building, the historic St. John's Building as part of this project. Currently, the taxable value for both buildings, both the St. John's Building and the annex, is approximately $1.7 million. The application provides for, there's a potential for up to $7 million plus in reinvestment in this particular building. It is a historic building, so there's some challenges with ADA and some, so it's not your typical reinvestment project. It's going to take a significant investment to make this happen. As you recall, the other nuance in this project, and as I recall, probably not in modern history, meaning the last 20 years, but previous to that, this application, the first move, Mr. Kuntz would like on behalf of the development company, would be to do a TIF bond, not a TIF incentive, tax incentive. So I think in the city's history, we have done one or two of these, but again, not in the last 20 years. So the request is for a 15-year TIF bond, I would presume 100%. And then what happens with the TIF bond, we sell the bond and the increment we pay for the debt service each year on the particular building. We don't normally do that because there's more, there's obviously more steps that go involved. There's more engagement the city has because we're selling the bond and the like. This is a pre-app, and just to go over again one more time, is the pre-app only allows us to move forward. There's a $2,500 fee. We hire Baker Tilly, former Springstead. They then, if you approve tonight, you're inviting them to submit a full application. So Baker Tilly, our third-party financial advisor for bonds and other things that come forward to the city of Grand Forks, they look at it from a third party. What does this project need to have a reasonable return and at the same time provide for, not to be too lucrative, right? And we've done these, the most recent ones are, peer development was a 15-year TIF. We came back with an 80% over 15 years. That's the most recent TIF that we've moved forward. That was an economic incentive. That was not a bond, as I noted. Then, because the state legislature made anything beyond five years a little more hard for us to get approved, we need the county, Grand Forks County, and we also need the Grand Forks Public Schools to approve this, along with the city of Grand Forks. As you know, then along the way, what we decided to do, we didn't need to do this, but we created a local government advisory committee so that all the taxing entities that ultimately need to approve this could be part of it and feel like, you know, they were part of the initial, and we just don't have a city council approve. We go over there, that they're there at the front of this. And so there's membership for all three of those government entities to include the Park District. The Park District is part of the city of Grand Forks, so when we approve it, they approve it. What we've done in the past, council president Sandy has been the chair of this local government advisory group as the council president, and then our other representative has been our vice president, which in this case would be council person Mock, moving forward. You know, the application says that, is that they'd like to get started with this project this winter. This whole process takes two to three months to not only get the analysis done, to get it to the government bodies, set the public hearing date, make all the final decisions. There's a lot of hoops, and so we got to get going sooner rather than later. And really, the first step is for you to approve this. Us to get ahold of our agent at Baker Tilly, named Michaela, to get her moving on this and get financial information from the development company so we can start the analysis on this. Keep in mind, you know, we have many tools. This is in a opportunity zone. As you recall, we thought we may have had one project with Olive End, the boutique hotel with, at all, we'll say, downtown. Mr. Geezy was going to use the opportunity zone as a kind of another layer to try to get that project across the finish line, and lo and behold, this pandemic came along, and that's been put on hold. So this would be another opportunity, because as you recall, our opportunity zone is the north-south half of downtown, and then along that University Avenue gateway corridor up to the University of North Dakota, plus or minus. So that would be an opportunity. Also, this spring, Paul Hodak was in front of you, and he, you guys also moved forward as city council, so that now you can get a five-year 100% remodeling exemption too. And it's not capped. Remember, as you recall earlier, you removed the cap. It was capped at $1 million. Now there's an unlimited cap. So the point is, when Baker Tilly looks at it, they'll look at all the different options that we, that we're able to move forward, whether it's a TIF bond, a TIF incentive, or all these varieties to see what we can do to try to work collaboratively to get this across. And of course, we need our other two taxing entities to agree to this too. Otherwise, I suspect the developer's going to say, I can't do it with all three moving forward. And lo and behold, we have a new city attorney along, so this is his first ride along on an incentive too, which is exciting too. The last thing is, it's not eligible for a Renaissance Zone. That got burned up early after the Renaissance Zone was created, I think in 1997. It was one of our initial projects. It got used up, and it really didn't move the needle very much. So that's not, that is not, one of the things we should look at at the legislative committee, maybe we should have the state say you can go back and do another one. It's been more than 20 years, and these projects are going to start coming around. That might be something we want to ask. We should start bringing these projects through again as they've reached their useful life. With that, so we're asking you to, let's move it forward. Let's try to get to, let's try to get this thing into the end zone. Working with Mr. Kuntz, it's fun to work with new developers, and this would be Mike's first project, I think, in the downtown area. So Mayor, you're, let's be hungry, let's be aggressive, and we need to get our other governmental entities, and they've been a little lukewarm on some of these things. So we really need to bring a lot of data and information to the party so we can get everyone to approve it. With that, Mayor, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. And I think it's important to note that the reason this didn't go to committee is it came in after an attempt to be sort of business-friendly and to move things along, and the fact that there's many steps in the process, that we attempted to move on a little bit quicker rather than wait two more weeks. So that was the main reason for that idea. With that, Mr. Weber, comments?
If I may make a quick question. The bonding approach is unique for us in recent times, but this is a unique building and a unique opportunity. In the past, like at peer development, the requirement for affordable housing, was that part of the TIF or was that part of the Renaissance Zone? That was part of the TIF, wasn't it?
Mayor Botenski and council member Weber. That building or that lot was not in our Renaissance Zone because it was previously owned by, a large portion by the school district. So actually, we didn't have it in a Renaissance Zone. So we went directly just to a 15-year TIF. I think what persuaded, I would say particularly the city council and the school district, and probably maybe the county too, is that it did have low and moderate apartments in there. However, you know, the developer in that case was Dakota Commercial and also Mr. Tweetin. They did get a grant from the state of North Dakota for, to provide those apartments, and that really helped people get to yes on that. But that was also incorporated as part of the incentive piece when we had Baker Tilly take a look at it about what kind of funds they were going to get to make that happen. As you recall, it was, I think, 50/50. I think, I'm going to guess, I think there are 81 apartments in peer development. I think about half of them are low and moderate income.
But that is not part of this?
Not at this time.
Not at this time?
Yeah.
Do you see that as upsetting the apple cart to suggest that that be included at this time?
I would say, I would just have it as kind of a point of note that there might be some, there would be some interest as it goes through the process of working with the third-party advisor, working with the developer on whether that could be incorporated.
Very good.
There's always a sense with TIF projects, and when we're giving an incentive, in this case, a bond, is what will- case, a bond, is what will the developer give back to the community?
Yes.
For that incentive? Certainly, they're going to add a lot of value to this building. They're going to restore a historic building that's really important in Grand Forks. There's sometimes that third piece of what's in it for the public as part of a development. So we, I think we should, that could be brought up. I wouldn't include it in this motion.
Not even as a point of note?
I think it's, we'll make a note of it, and I wouldn't make it subject to having that happen.
I'm not wanting to make it subject to, with that all stated, I'd like to make a motion to approve, please.
I was going to have a second. Stockler, seconds. Any other question, comments, or points of note? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All right, 4.5, City of Grand Forks Reorganization Inspection Department.
Thank you. Mr. Phelan?
Mayor Bochensky, members of the city council. We had a robust discussion on this, and it was a really good 4-3 vote. We've added, I just want to highlight some things that we've added to the staff report. Mr. Gostad provided a memo discussing of non-classified versus classified, and I think, Mayor, maybe after we're done here, have Mr. Gostad just give a summary of his memo when we're done here. Thank you, Tangi. There she is. There's Tangi, our HR director's in the house, too. And so she added an attachment regarding positions that came in non-classified contracted positions. There's one attachment there. The record shows that some of those positions just kind of went away. Some of those positions became civil service positions. Some of them are still non-classified positions. That's what that also does. The other thing the council asked for is to, what are other regional communities doing? And those same, those are the communities we showed there are the ones that we survey for benchmark positions. And you can see, if you look down that list, it's a variety. Some are civil service, some are non-classified contracted, some are a hybrid, a combo plat or that. So draw that from what you will. The other thing is, Council member Kavami has asked us a lot of, why do we do one or the other on this? And so in your staff report is a list of reasons why we do contract with employees from, you know, seasonal contracted all the way to department heads. In this particular case, working with Mayor Bochensky, probably the first bullet is really the efficiency and transparency and accountability and alignment with this mayor's goals. And I would say his goals are similar to if you were here in 2000 with a brand-new mayor, Brown, and a brand-new city council. There's, that was why they moved department heads to contracted positions. They wanted folks to be more accountable. They were, a lot of them were from the private sector, and they wanted performance, and they wanted to demonstrate that they were the boss. So there were a few tough years along there, but that's the reason why we went that direction. Succession planning. Succession planning, sometimes what we've done is we put people in place really to build up the organization, and sometimes you have overlapping work. Maybe you add, you have other positions, people are looking at retirement, that we've added in positions so that we have some sort of succession plan, especially in a technical department like this is what we're looking at. Finally, flexibility with pay benefits and other compensation. So in this in particular, if you were to try to meet the goal, if the goal is the number-one candidate is an outside candidate, a lot of times, that's really something that matters to them. They're not so bound to the civil service system. They didn't grow up in our system. It's more of an enticement to hire somebody sometimes from the outside because we can have some more moves than what we have with civil service. Finally, equity. And we talked quite a bit last week, Monday. We have this triumvirate of three different departments. We have inspections. We want to create as a sole independent department. We already have planning and, of course, engineering. And the other planning and engineering are still currently contracted positions, so this inspection would be aligned as part of our development community of all being contracted positions. Lastly, Councilmember Kavami asked, the mayor and I, you know, what's happened over the last 20 years, and I think even Ms. Bovette talked about this, is things changed. So when we started out first 10 years, positions went contracted. Probably the last 10 years, as I said, they went back to civil service. But the mood of the council changed, the mood of the mayor changed, we built up a more robust team within these departments, and then going back to classified civil service made some sense. This is a new position now, new administration, new city council. That's why we think it's kind of time now, let's try this as a non-classified position. It kind of fits in that realm with that. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back to you for further comment.
Mr. Gostad, do you want to go over your memo?
I can. It's, I mean, it's a fairly lengthy memo, six pages, but the focus really is on the definition of what a department head is and who are classified department heads and who are non-classified department heads. And the first item on the agenda is to create the Building Inspection Department would be the first motion. And because that particular department head is not listed as being within classified, yet from my interpretation of the ordinance, it falls in the context of being non-classified because it would be a supervisor of a city department employed by contract and officially designated by the mayor in that sense. Now, the other component here is that there is another ordinance that comes into play with respect to what are called appointed officials. The definition of an appointed official isn't set forth in that particular ordinance. I couldn't find it anywhere, but it would seem to me that that, this position could be deemed to be an appointed position. You could incorporate that type of language within the contract. And what that does is the mayor would then, if there was going to be some action taken to end that particular individual's employment, the mayor would report that back to city council. And the city council would then have the ability to vote to reinstate the person into that position if they wanted to. So tonight, it's not necessary that the council vote to place this as a classified position because it certainly could do that at some point in the future. But it kind of addresses some of the concerns, I think, some of the council members had about, you know, the mayor ending somebody's employment without some level of oversight. And I think there is a little bit of that in that other ordinance about appointed officials.
Thank you. Question, comments? Mr. Vean, please.
A question for Mr. Gostad. I reviewed your memo, but I don't know if I fully, I had some questions on it. I don't know if I fully comprehended. I was a little concerned because if we want any position to be a department head, we would certainly have to amend the ordinances to make it a department head. So it almost sounded like it was not possible to make a position a department head. Could you maybe walk me through that? Because I thought, you know, as a council, we could amend the ordinance of which positions are department head positions, of which positions are civil service, and that could be done through amending the existing code by ordinance.
And I'm not suggesting otherwise, Councilmember Vean. What I'm suggesting is that you've got a request to create the Building Inspection Department. That seems to be, that doesn't require an ordinance change, but what would require an ordinance change is if we were going to place that as in a classified position. And that, in that particular action, would require two readings. And to avoid the situation where, so we have the department created under one motion, and if the council wanted to place that into a classified position, you'd have a second motion to amend the ordinance for the definition of a department head.
Again, so that tonight, we could do two motions, is what you're saying. The first one is to go through with the restructuring, and the second one would be just the discussion on classified.
Correct. If I could, Mayor, that's precisely right, Councilmember Vean, is that you'd have the first motion simply to create the Building Inspection Department, and if there was a motion to place that as a department head as a classified position, the second motion would be basically the first reading to amend City Code Section 6-0101, subsection 14, to include Building Inspection Department head within those that are listed as being classified positions. Does that answer your question?
Thank you.
All right, so we can certainly entertain that. If, I think everyone's, it seems pretty comfortable with creating the new department. I think that was the only concern was the actual. So if you want to move forward on that half and then have a discussion on the other motion, that's certainly.
And I would like to do that because, as we have talked, Mayor, I think it makes good sense to do this. I think it's a logical chain of command and responsibility. I think it makes good sense. I would make that motion to approve the new department head position.
So essentially, are we just moving forward with the original motion that was passed split previously, and then we would look at reclassifying that as the second conversation?
Correct. The way I understand the motion is to create the Building Inspection Department and the, a department head position, period.
Okay.
That was my motion.
But then, yeah, by default, it would be a contract position until we created it. Okay.
Correct.
Fair enough. If everyone's okay with that, I guess let's do, you know, let's, we'll have a second. So we have a motion in a second. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Dockler.
I do have a question about the organizational chart. So with this motion, are we also approving the organizational chart as is?
The organizational chart hasn't really, hasn't changed. Do you want to, Mr. Phelan?
Mayor Bochensky and members of city council, Councilmember Dockler, the org charts are meant more as information. And the one has, the one has inspections in and one doesn't have a separate inspections department. The second one also does reflect the fact that we've made some modifications in the city administration and have eliminated the Public Information Office. So that's, the two nuances in the, in the second org chart.
So this, yeah, this motion wouldn't have anything involved?
Yeah. Those are just to inform you what we're currently operating under.
Okay. Does that answer it, Ms. Dockler? Okay. Mr. Weigel?
Maybe a question for whoever wants to answer it, but by Mr. Vean's motion, are we delaying the hiring of somebody to take over this position due to the fact that we don't know if it's going to be contract? We don't know it's going to be a classified position?
I think we can, this, under this agenda, and we can have two separate motions, so we can talk about it and decide right now. Okay. So. Any other questions or comments? And we'll move to a vote. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carries. Mr. Vean, did you have a motion?
Okay. I do have a motion that I would like to see the position be a classified position. I think that might be how that would be stated if I wanted to see it civil service. Yeah, so I make that motion.
Okay. Do we have a second? Then we'll have discussion. Second by Ms. Mock. All right, questions or comments? I guess I, I'll make a statement, or did you want to start, Mr. Sandy? Go ahead, Mr. Sandy.
I, this is one of those that's difficult because I think there are reasonable arguments that can be made on either side. I think Mr. Vean brings very valuable history and understanding. I also, however, know that this position will be reporting directly to the mayor, and we can always make this position classified at any point in the future. So I don't really see the harm in starting this position as a contract position as non-qualified and then see how it goes. So I, again, I'm not, I will have no hard feelings no matter how this goes, but I think having it as a contract position is reasonable in this circumstance.
Thank you, Mr. Vean. Did you want to?
I can, then you can have the last word.
Oh, there might be others, but please, please go ahead.
No, I think, and it is, when I talk about this, it isn't negative to anybody that's up here on the city council as we're talking about it, not to the mayor, to others, but I've just seen the political influence that has been exerted on this, on this specific position because of the technical part of the position in interpreting codes and enforcing codes, which has been, it's not always gone in the right direction. Fundamentally, I think department head should be, should be classified in general. I think the civil service system really keeps the politics out of the hiring and firing. The mayor under civil service still selects the person. He, the mayor still, if he wants to fire them, has the ability to have people fired, just like you could under a contract employee. There are some additional processes you go through to make sure that you probably have truly documented it, but it doesn't take the power of hiring and firing away from the mayor when it's civil service. It, the political influence is not necessarily from the mayor. It can be, and oftentimes has been, from people in city councils, not necessarily from the mayor at all. So that's where I'm at. And I'm kind of like you. Whatever way it goes, I think the decision is to split it is the best one, and I just have a preference that this is the type of position it should be.
Any other comments? Mr. Weigel, please.
Just a quick question. Obviously, I think we've all seen how easy it is to get rid of a contract employee. My question is, is how easy is it to get rid of a classified employee? Is it a simple cut to the budget and they're gone? Is, I mean, what's, what's that process?
Maybe Tangi would be best as the secretary of the Civil Service Commission to...
Thank you, Mayor Bochensky and Councilperson Weigel. So for disciplining and terminating a classified employee, there are some steps required. It would be recommended throughout the department by the department head to the mayor, likely disciplinary action. It doesn't necessarily have to be progressive discipline. It can jump to termination if they violate drug and alcohol policy, something like that. But what the civil service code does afford a classified employee is the right to grieve or appeal that decision. So that's what's afforded to a classified employee.
What if it has nothing to do with work performance evaluation? The city is low on money, so we want to get rid of Todd, and he happens to be a civil service employee. How does that work?
So if there was a reduction in force, we would be able to just cut a classified employee. Yes.
Thank you. We'll keep you for now, Todd.
Todd is a contract employee, by the way.
In that case.
Ms. Mock, please.
Tangi, could you go through the probationary period and what that entails?
Sure. Sure. So I did also have questions from Council President Sandy as well as Councilmember Kavami regarding the probationary appointment. So all classified employees who are appointed by the mayor would have a six-month probationary period, with the exception of some PSAP, fire suppression, and police officer positions that have a longer probationary period of a year. And so the probationary period is a trial period in order for that new employee to get acclimated into the job, into the culture, and it's a working test. And if things aren't working out, then the department head can recommend to the mayor to terminate probationary employment and that employment. The one other thing I wanted to talk about with the probationary appointment, shoot, lost my train of thought there. So our contract employees do not have probationary appointments. Those are at-will employment. And, but they do have the same goals and weights and performance measures and job duties, and supervisors and department heads are consistently working with those employees to get people up to speed. It's the goal of the City of Grand Forks to make sure that our hires and our new employees are, have every chance of success. It's very expensive to recruit and retain and train employees, and the more we can train and keep our employees, the better.
Mr. Kavami, please.
Thank you again for your time today, Tangi. So I wanted to ask your permission, if I could quote you from when we spoke earlier, and it can be loosely paraphrased, maybe, but I asked you a question on what your recommendation was, and is it be okay if I just discuss what we talked about?
Sure.
Not a direct quote, but, so I saw the merits in both ways, and I had a lot of questions for you, and I, again, appreciate your time. But I asked you, what's your recommendation? You're the HR manager, director. What would you recommend? And do you want me to say it, or would you like to say what you said? I'd be happy to if you want me to.
My recommendation would to be, would be to appoint it as My recommendation would to be, would be to appoint it as a contract position. It fits alongside the plant, the city planner and the city engineer that are already contract positions, as well as, this is, this is a new position. This is a new department that's standing on its own, and so to make sure that, that we are going in the right direction, it's a little more flexible with a contract position. It's not.
And we can always change it.
We can always change it to classified if it's working out.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments this time?
One quick, Tangi, when you said that, are you not sure we are doing the right thing by creating this as a department head?
No, absolutely, I think.
That's what I interpreted what you just said, was that you want to make sure we're going in the right direction. It should be a.
Thank you, Councilmember Veen. No, actually, I fully support Mayor Vechensky and, and the council with, with separating the inspections division out from under engineering. There are many ways to set up inspections across an organization. Lots of entities have it under planning or, you know, or in different departments. So this, when we do something like this and create a new department or create a new project, oftentimes we use that contract position to make sure we are going in the right direction and able to maneuver. So that was, I like the flexibility is why I prefer the contract.
So I have a question for you, Mayor.
Yeah, please.
When would be the appropriate time to revisit this to see if it should be classified?
I think a year would be good. I think, do you want, can I give my speech now?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think we could revisit it in a year. I think that'd be a good time to get, whether it's a person that's on staff or somebody new, make sure it's the, the direction we want to go. It's, it's a position that needs leadership. It's, it's been kind of a group that's been a little bit rudderless, and I've certainly want that chain of command, want to see that leadership. I think that we can get a lot, a lot out of that department with that. I've, you know, I have no interest in, in making it a contract for any additional power or any more ability. I just, you know, I campaigned and I ran on a, you know, very business-friendly, transparent accountability, and I expect a lot out of the department heads. I'm, I'm not asking to change any of the department heads that are currently there. You know, this might not be the most popular decision with, with them, but it's not a popularity contest. I'm just trying to do what I think is best for the city and do my job to the best. And, you know, people voted me in based on, on those ideals, and I think I owe it to them to, to continue that, certainly, certainly with this, this move is, is right in mind with that, so. That's all I have to say. If there's a, we have a, we do have a motion. I guess my recommendation would be to wait, and so then my, my recommendation along with Tangi and Mr. Phelan would be to, you know, at this time, vote no, but revisit it in the future.
Can I ask another question of you?
What, just one more?
One more?
No, I'm just kidding.
What are we waiting, what do you want to wait for to, to, you're going to wait one more year or wait a year? What do you, you wanted to do?
Well, I think I'm entertaining.
You might entertain it at that time?
I, no, I think I'm entertaining you for that year. I, my, my goal would be to continue it as it is, as an, as a contract employee, right in line with the engineer and with the planning department. But if you were seeing it and you were afraid, I would be entertaining, you know, you to make that change. It's not that I don't have confidence in the move. I think the move is much needed, and, you know, I've had a number of contractors come up to me and say they're really excited to see this move and, and happy to see it. Like you said, it's probably a more of a philosophy change, but I'm more than, more than comfortable moving forward the, the way it is.
Thank you.
Ms. Mock, please.
I, I mean, I'm not super impassioned on this issue. I am fully supportive of trying a new department if we think that can make things function better, or at least try something new to better support the city. I, I don't have a problem trying that. I do always try to remember that all of our positions are temporary and my presence is temporary, that this is really the seat of Ward Four, that it's not my seat. And so when I try to remember that, I also try to think forward that we don't know who's going to be sitting in these seats in the future. So when I hear that there were past issues with employees who are in contracted positions, I guess I try to keep that in mind because I know that I'm setting the stage for good government. I'm setting the stage for hopefully really good employees, and I want them to be able to do their jobs. And I may not be here to make any of those decisions. The mayor's seat may change, so it's not so much about who's sitting here now, but who might be here in the future and what decisions or mannerisms they may have. And because of that, I guess I want to make sure that making these types of decisions, I'm thinking about the protections, both of the integrity of the job and the decisions they may have to make, particularly in more of a technical area, as well as knowing that we're not necessarily making the decisions for ourselves, but who will be here in the future.
Certainly, and I think, you know, it's important to notice, to note that there can be political pressure regardless of whether you're civil service or not, and I certainly hope the type of political pressure that, that people have faced in the past was outside of the, the normal bounds of, of reality or of what normal business is like. And I'd hope that today, in, you know, the modern world with communications and the way we communicate and having a, you know, more light shown on, on things that are happening, I would, I would imagine that to be far outside the norm of what has maybe happened in the past. But with that, if there's, is there any other questions or comments? Otherwise, oh.
Just have one question.
Mr. Gostad.
I want to make sure you understand that the motion is to amend city code section 6010114 to include the building inspection as a classified, in the listing of classified positions. So this would be first reading of that amendment. So just so the council is aware, you'd have to have a second reading the next council meeting.
Sounds good. Since we do have a little split, I think if there's no more comments, we'll just do a roll call vote on this one, and are we looking for a yea or nay? Mr. Weigel?
Nay.
Mrs. Dockler?
Yea.
Mr. Weber?
Aye.
Ms. Mock?
Yes.
Mr. Cavami, nay. Mr. Sandy?
Nay.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Veen. Motion carries four to three. Thank you. Let's move on. Item number five, informational items. Do we have any other motions we need to make on the action items, Maureen?
No, we do not.
All right, informational items, number five.
5.1, Statement of Changes in Cash Balance as of July 31st and August 31st.
All right, thank you. Number six, I don't see any citizens left in here. Is there any citizen comments, or have they all given up? Speak now. Looks like seeing none. We'll move on. Number seven, approval of minutes and bills.
7.1, Vendor List and Engineers' Estimate as Presented.
Mr. Sandy, do you want to make your usual motion?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion from Mr. Sandy, second from Ms. Dockler. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. That motion carry, or that appro, the vendor list is approved. Let's see, minutes, 7.2. Do we have a motion on the minutes?
Mayor Vechensky, there's actually no minutes attached for tonight's.
Oh, all right. Well, there you go. I guess, Todd, the, the light shines on you now. Moving on to eight, city administrator comments.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Vechensky and members of the city council. A few updates. Councilmember Weber rightly reminded, there's a session coming up, and for those that haven't been around here, we have a legislative committee that's chaired by Councilmember Veen and Weber, and generally, we put together a list of our priorities as a city of Grand Forks. I've attached that under city administrator comments. I've taken some things off like water treatment, plant funding. Anyways, that's a start, and generally, what we do is, post-election, after November 3rd, we bring back that priority list, and then we have the state, we have the legislative group that's kind of set in place. We bring our priorities back to the city council, get them approved by December, so that when we move forward with the session in January, we're, we're good to go. Also, there is a team Grand Forks legislative group that is made up of UND, Grand Forks County, Airport Authority, Public Schools, EDC in the chamber. We, we come together with all of our priorities kind of listed. So just so you know, the nuance is that we have our own city of Grand Forks priorities, and then the city of Grand, or the team Grand Forks has broad categories. So we're working on both of those right now. I also wanted to point out, we do have a legislative forum that's coming up, and that's going to be host, that's usually hosted by the school district. That's going to be on November 19th. That's at the school district, Mark Sanford Center, and that's where all the local governments get together, from the city, county, schools, and parks. And we meet with all the new or re-elected legislators, and we kind of all discuss our priorities as a group. Sometimes we have met with our legislators just as a city of Grand Forks group, but we've done it both ways. Just so you know, there's going to be a lot of meetings coming up related, leading up to the session in January where, where a lot of the work will go on. I ask, also, I've heard from the legislature, it'll be hybrid, meaning representatives or senators may be in person, or they may be at an alternative location. They have timely spent, they, they did invest in some technology, thank goodness, at the state, at the state capitol, so you can do hybrid. That will also allow us to testify, I think, without being in person, too, and we put a lot of miles on, and those trips are sometimes excruciating. And Mr. Veen, God bless him, he did a lot of the testifying for us the last session, so we were very thankful to have him in Bismarck doing all that heavy lifting in Bismarck. So that's kind of the setup. A lot of meetings come up. Thanks for the, the reminder, and I'll start working with the two chairs, Mayor, and getting that moving forward. The other thing that Mr. Weber brought up, too, I think is really important, too, is that the JDA invested in the market capture, regional market capture study, and that probably should come back to the JDA. That kind of got lost in the fog of, of this pandemic, and I would probably propose that we bring that to either the, maybe the growth fund and/or the JDA and, and have Barry Rufford, who led that group among all of our other partners, and have a presentation and see kind of where we're at with that and if we needed to move that forward. But that's something, too, we kind of set on the back burner, do the pandemic, too. So those, those are two things that should be coming forward that are really important. And I think, last thing, Mayor, Councilmember Cavami, I think asked a very important question is, how do we come to decisions? And I think the inspections piece is a classic example, is that, just so you know, the mayor allows us to have robust discussion and debate about how we should move forward, and, and this inspections whole conversation was a lot of debate and discussion between Tangi, the mayor, and I and others about how we should move forward, and ultimately, that got here. So just so you know, at the end of the scenes, we do have lots of discussions and try to get it as close as possible so that the city council can get it into the end zone on a night like this. So with that, that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan. Nine, mayor and council member comments. We'll just go down the line. Mr. Weigel, anything tonight?
I think it's one of the first times I've ever seen the council vote against the recommendation of the, the HR director, the city administrator, and others. So that, I thought that was interesting. We don't typically see that. So just some, some food for thought.
Thank you. Ms. Dockler, anything tonight?
No.
Mr. Weber, please.
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Nothing? Well, thank you. My wife will be happy I'll be home a little sooner. Mr. Cavami?
I think these are my first closing comments. I generally am silent, but I'd just like to say I'm happy that it was a split vote and that we all didn't just agree with something, and we all, regardless of how it turned out, I spent a lot of time thinking about it, and I hope everybody else did, too.
Oh, thank you. Mr. Veen?
I, I'm okay.
Okay, well, that's good to hear.
No, actually, I do have, I do have one thing to say. One of, one of the things I noticed sitting up here for all these hours, all the people in the audience tonight wore masks, and I appreciate that. That's all I want to say.
Awesome. Absolutely. That was great to see. Council Vice President Mock?
I appreciate the discourse, and I think we had a good discussion, and I guess, I don't think it's bad when we sometimes disagree. I don't think anybody was super impassioned. Just, you know, a nice civil discussion. I do think that we have perhaps to the success of the project, but the regional water treatment plant starting up and not having significant issues, people not even realizing that we're drawing water from the new plant, is actually very significant. And I think that that is a testament to, you know, good, proper planning and execution of a project, and infrastructure like that is always best when you don't notice it because that means there are no problems. But that is a really big project for the city of Grand Forks, and I think it's important we remember how much effort and cost went into that, and that that is really one of our biggest public health services that we offer our citizens.
Thank you. Council President Sandy, please.
One thing, Mr. Gostad, regarding the recusal, we're going to have to have another lesson on that. Maybe you could send us out something in a memo, but I think all of us are used to doing things one way, and so this is going to take a little educating.
No, no problem, and I, I did send out a memo not too long ago.
I know you did. I know. I read the memo. I didn't even understand it.
I will try to clarify and make it, clarify it next time.
And then one last bid shout-out to all our firefighters here locally for what they've done, they did out in Oregon, what they did on the interstate, what they do for us every day. Of course, all of our first responders, police department as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Yep, thank you. If I have no comments tonight, perhaps we can do a dry run-through, although I suppose it would be considered a council meeting, so we'll have to think about that. But everyone have a good night and stay safe. Thank you. Meeting adjournment. Got a motion to adjourn by Council President Sandy, second by many people, including Mr. Weber. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.